Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular and landy meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of Charlotte County, Florida. For June 14th, 2022, let the record reflect that all commissioners are present. If you would like to join us, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a prayer by Pastor Bill Franks from the First Baptist Church of Pontagorda. Good morning, sir. It's great to see you again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the Continental Congress met, they met and they agreed on one thing, that George Washington should be the chairman, but little else did they agree on. And Ben Franklin arose and made this statement. "I have lived, sir, a long time. The longer I live, the more convincing proofs I see of this truth, that God governs the affairs of men. And if a sparrow cannot fall to the ground without his notice, is it probable that an entire empire can ride without his aid? So that's why we come to you, our Father, today, asking for your wisdom, asking for your strength, asking for your understanding. As we cannot see air as it moves, we can see the effect. So we're asking for your wisdom to move in this meeting today to see the effect that will benefit everyone that's a part. Thank you for those that protect us and serve this community, keeping us safe and keeping us protected. And we thank you for it all, in the name of your Son Jesus. Amen."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Flores, we'll go to you, sir, for changes to the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, we have two changes today to R1, added attachment for the impact fee presentation. And then for UA4, also added staff report and exhibits. That's it.
Chairman, I move this wonderfully abbreviated change to the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Is there opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition. It passes unanimously. With that, we'll go to proclamations, and I'll entertain a motion on the-
Sir Chairman, I move the proclamation.
Second.
Motion is second. Opposition? Hearing none. It passes unanimously. Good morning, everyone. We're going to start off by hamming it up a little bit. Some people know what that's all about. Whereas amateur radio operators are hams, and Charlotte County have a long history of volunteer service and have provided countless hours of community service in times of tragedy and calm through their efforts in hurricane preparedness, in the area of emergency communication and weather spotting, through skyworn and communications efforts in community emergency response teams. And whereas the American Radio Relay League is the largest organization for amateur radio operators in the United States of America, comprised of many different peoples from different walks of life, through their activities, training, use of technology, and communications around the world, foster friendships and goodwill. And whereas the American Radio Relay League since 1993 hosts a sponsors a field day, during a 24-hour period amateur radio operators showcase and demonstrate their skills in emergency preparedness to provide communications with emergency power and portable antennas. Whereas the Charlotte Amateur Radio Society, the largest amateur radio club in Charlotte County, will be operating and competing on June 25th and 26th, 2022, in Amateur Radio Relay League Field Day, relying on emergency power and portable antennas and demonstrating their commitment to emergency communications operations. And whereas Amateur Radio Week is an opportunity to honor and recognize the valuable work of ham radio operators who have assisted the state of Florida and Charlotte County by allowing constant communication with impacted areas during past hurricane seasons. The week of, passed and duly adopted this 14th day of June 2022, we welcome Amateur Radio Week the 20th through the 26th. And I would ask that Mr. Young come up. You have anybody else with you, sir?
Please.
Yeah. Everybody come up. We're going to go over here to get a picture.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is that right, Brian?
Wait, she needs- Let her get one. There you go.
Appreciate what you guys do. Hopefully don't need you. No offense. Glad to have you. Hope we don't have to lean on you too much. All right. Our next one. Next proclamation is May Man Jennings Day for the General Federation of Women's Clubs. Whereas the American Revolution broke out in 1775, our colonists weren't under a single flag. When the Second Continental Congress created the Continental Army, our first American flag, the Continental Colors, was designed. And the flag had 13 red and white alternating stripes and a Union Jack in the corner. It was much too similar to that of the British and not a confidence builder for our revolutionary effort. George Washington encouraged creating a new symbol of our freedom and independence. And whereas on June 14th, 1777, the Second Continental Congress passed a resolution stating that the flag of the United States be 13 stripes, alternating red and white, and the Union be 13 stars of white in a blue field representing a new constellation. And whereas over 100 years later, on June 14th, 1916, President Woodrow Wilson marked the anniversary by officially establishing June 14th as Flag Day, a day for all to show our pride and love and support for our nation's symbol of freedom and liberty and a true beacon of hope for the entire world. So now therefore be it proclaimed that June 14th shall be known in all Charlotte County as Flag Day, passed and duly adopted before you this morning. Commissioner? I already know you're going to talk.
Just for 30 seconds. This is the first time we've really celebrated Flag Day in Charlotte County. And on behalf of American Legion Post 110, which is just a few minutes from here on Harbor Boulevard, you're all invited to come over for a program at noon time today, and they tell me there will be lunch served. Thank you much.
Get out.
Get out.
All right. National Mosquito Control Awareness Week. And I'm very aware of them because I got bit this weekend. Whereas the County of Charlotte is home to three GF- oh, wait a minute. That's not the right one. Woo-hoo. Is this the right one? Yeah. There we go. I'm sorry. This is May Man Jennings Day. I apologize. Whereas the County of Charlotte is home to three GFWC Women's Clubs. GFWC Pontagorda Women's Club, established in 1925. GFWC Women's Club of Port Charlotte, established in 1968. And GFWC Rotunda West Women's Club, established in 1974. Whereas the 19th Amendment of the Constitution allowing women the right to vote was supported by suffragists, co-founder of the Florida League of Women Voters and First Lady of the State of Florida, May Man Jennings, who served as President of the Florida Federation of Women's Clubs and Florida Director of the General Federation of Women's Clubs. And whereas the bold and courageous First Lady May Man Jennings was instrumental in the establishment of the Royal Palm State Park, the State Board of Forestry, the State Park Service, the Florida State Library at Tallahassee, and the creation of Everglades National Park. And whereas following the example of First Lady May Man Jennings, the General Federation of Women's Clubs is distinguished from other service organizations by the breadth of its outreach, spanning all areas of lives within the community, the state, and the world, including the arts, education, environment, health and wellness, civic engagement, international outreach, and support for the victims of domestic violence. And whereas the GFWC Florida Federation of Women's Clubs wishes to promote First Lady May Man Jennings to the Florida Women's Hall of Fame. Now therefore be it proclaimed that June 21st, 2022, shall be known in all of Charlotte County as May Man Jennings Day for the General Federation of Women's Clubs, passed and duly adopted this morning. And if we could have, I have Catherine Gallagher and anybody else? It's Catherine? Anybody else that's with her, please come up. And with the group, we're going to go over to the side again for a picture. Thank you. Good morning. Hi. Good morning. Good morning. Hi, Lauren. How are you?
Lauren, I'm staying somewhere. On the fourth side. Hospital. Somewhere. Right here. Right over there.
All right. Now we're going to talk mosquitoes. Okay. Whereas Florida is home to more than 80 documented species of mosquitoes, more than any other state, and 33 of these species are known to potentially carry serious diseases. And whereas Charlotte County is home to over 40 documented species of mosquitoes that breed in every type of habitat, including salt marshes, swamps, and wetlands, lakes and ponds, floodwaters, polluted waters, certain flowers and weeds, tree holes, crab holes, as well as man-made breeding grounds such as containers, bird baths, water features, tires, et cetera. Whereas mosquitoes are one of the deadliest creatures on earth and responsible for over 1 million deaths every year by carrying diseases such as malaria, Zika, West Nile, Dungue fever, Chickagunya fever, yellow fever, dog heartworm, as well as several types of encephalitis. And whereas female mosquitoes cause a nuisance of itchy bites that can cause a significant reduction in tourism as well as a reduction in agricultural production. And whereas Charlotte County mosquito control strives to control mosquito populations through an integrated approach, consistent with applicable laws and justified by principles of public health, vector control, environmental safety, and fiscal responsibility, producing nuisance economic and public health benefits. And whereas during the month of June, Charlotte County mosquito control, in combination with the American Mosquito Control Association and the Florida Mosquito Control Association, is honored to participate in National Mosquito Control Awareness Week, June 19th through the 25th. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the week of June 19th through June 25th shall be known in all of Charlotte County as National Mosquito Control Awareness Week, passed and duly adopted today. Mr. Shermhorn? I don't see him. We have others here? Mr. Prophet? Okay. I guess they weren't itching to get here this morning. Sorry.
Comes John.
Ah, John's here.
I think Scott's going to be here later, so you can give it to him then.
There you go, sir. He's out spraying? Oh, okay. Okay. Pastor Bob Carlson Day. Whereas Pastor Bob Carlson was ordained in 1982 and started his ministry and his service to Charlotte County in 1991. And whereas Pastor Bob has been the assistant pastor at the First Methodist Church in Pontagorda. And whereas Pastor Bob has served at Fossil Hospital as their chaplain, as well as on their ethics committee. And whereas Pastor Bob has been the president of the Charlotte County Ministerial Association and many other civic activities across the years. And whereas Pastor Bob Carlson will be retiring after 40 years of service to God and the community, now therefore be it proclaimed that June 23rd shall be known in all of Charlotte County as Pastor Bob Carlson Day, passed and duly adopted today. And where's Pastor? Pastor Bob. All right. We will make sure he gets that. I can't think of something to say here. This is pretty interesting. Hmm. World Doll Day. Everybody's a doll today. Okay. Whereas Charlotte County recognizes the importance dolls have on society in regard to history and the economy. Whereas the very first doll toys are among the oldest man-made objects existing as early as ancient times until today, contributing $120 billion to the global economy. And whereas cherished generation after generation, the looks and purposes of dolls have changed over these centuries. Their evolution has always been closely linked to fashion, as well as innovation and social change. Whereas World Doll Day was launched in 1986 by the United Federation of Doll Clubs to celebrate the gift of dolls made possible by doll artists, makers, manufacturers, and collectors around the world. Whereas the Peace River Doll Club in Pontagorda and the Port Charlotte Doll Club are two local philanthropic UFDC member organizations who appreciate the research, education, conservation, collecting, and the love of giving dolls. And whereas the 36th World Doll Day is scheduled for June 14th, 2022, now let it therefore be proclaimed that June 14th shall be known in all of Charlotte County as World Doll Day, passed and duly adopted today. And we have Dorothea Killian, Nancy Vanslo, and anybody else that's with them would like to come forward, please.
And the dolls?
I wish I had my grandmother's cabbage patch collection about now. All right. That concludes our proclamations, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Flores for employee recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yep, we're going to recognize our employees that have been with us. We've got five, 10, 15, and 20 years. So I'll let Ms. Jackie Stevens do the honors. Thank you.
Good morning. We'll begin with those employees being recognized for five years of service. Thomas David, County Attorney's Office. Gail Gersky, Community Development. Darrell Harmon, Facilities Construction and Maintenance. With 10 years of service, Vanji DiPiazza, Community Development. And Thomas Hill, Utilities. And with 20 years of service, Grant Pogan, Utilities. Congratulations. We'd also like to recognize those not able to attend today. Adam Barr, Public Works, five years. Denise Davison, Public Works, five years. Thomas Elson Jr., Public Works, five years. Christina Nadra, Public Works, five years. Jonathan Rodriguez, Public Works, five years. Richard Kohler, Budget Administrative Services, 10 years. Chris Newberry, Community Services, 10 years. Amber Tarnicki, Utilities, 10 years. And Brian Fraley, Public Safety, 15 years. Thank you all.
With that, we are going to go to a special presentation. Commissioner Deutsch.
Now, this morning, it's going to be my pleasure to accept a check from the Key Agency. The Key Agency is well-known in Charlotte County because they've been in existence for about 70 years. And the Dignam family is in their fourth generation of serving Charlotte County and Sarasota County. We forget about that because they're so supportive of so many of the community activities that we do in Charlotte County. But they also, I know they have an office in Northport. I've been there. We're all very, we're not, no, we're not real fond of insurance companies right now. We're having to deal with our homeowners' policies. But it's a necessary evil, and their service is impressive. And I don't know if I should say, this may, I don't know if this will hurt or help them, but they carry my insurance, and they're very comfortable to deal with, and I'm pleased to have the opportunity to have done that. But the Key Agency serves two counties because they're very active in Sarasota County with their philanthropic work of supporting Sarasota County as much as they do Charlotte County. And this morning, I'm honored to have with us Eric Fogel. Eric has been in the business for not all the 70 years of Key Agent- What is it? Come on up, Eric. What is it, about 38 years?
38 years, yes, sir.
And he's the Executive Vice President with the Key Agency. And I'm going to let him hold the heavy end of the check.
All right. There we go.
So we want to head over by the flag.
You got a quick- You bet. You bet. Go, step over to the microphone if you would, please. Thanks, Eric. Celebrating our 70th year in business, it's a responsibility to give back. So when we're successful and we're supported by the community, it's our responsibility to give back to the community. So we want to say thank you, and we appreciate the vision that you guys have for the veterans and the Heroes Park. And God bless our veterans.
Thank you.
Hurry up and cash that.
Tough getting it through the drive-in window. I tried.
All right. We appreciate that. Next, we're going to go to public input on agenda items only. Anyone wishing to address the board during this portion of the meeting may come forward, state your name for the car, state your name for the record, and which agenda item or items you'll be addressing. Remarks are limited to three minutes and shall be addressed to the commission as a body. We prefer that you actually fill a card out, but if you haven't, we'll make sure you get one. So we'll open up public input on agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak? Okay. I don't see anyone rising, so we will go ahead and move forward into our consent agenda. And I will start with Commissioner Deutsch.
Nothing, sir.
Commissioner Seau.
Nothing, sir.
Commissioner Constance.
F9, please.
And Commissioner Doherty.
Nothing.
I have nothing either.
Move the balance.
Motion second on the balance. Is there any discussion or comment?
Mr. Chair, I did want to, I guess, I don't know where this, this is before consent, but it's the reports received. We had that COVID-19 update. So I just, if it's okay to have that discussion now?
Why don't we go ahead and vote on this, and then we'll go back to that? If that's okay?
Yes, sir.
And then we'll do F9. Okay. So we have a motion to second on the balance. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Is there opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition to the motion. It passes unanimously. And go ahead. COVID-19.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Joe Pepe for furnishing his report. I know that we have had an uptick. We, I think, I was at the general medical staff meeting at Fossil Hospital last night. They're running a census of about 14 to 16. But the good news is, I think there's only one patient on a ventilator. They're really not seeing COVID pneumonia the way they used to. So, you know, there are admissions, but it's more out of caution because I want to make sure people do well if they have certain signs that they're lower oxygenation and they want to support them. They just have them in, and they're giving them the antivirals and whatever other treatments are prescribed. But the good news is that the cases are less severe, which I think we're all understanding of. And if you look at his report, there is definitely an uptick in the number of cases. The death rate is lagging, so we don't have that data yet. But I'm really assuming and hopeful that it's going to be extremely low, and it's just that this is the, you know, the newest community-acquired stuff. But if you look at the statewide rate, it's about a 16%, and we're about the same here, so we're tracking about the same. But I just thought it was important for us to note that. And that's it, sir. Thank you.
I've been doing a little bit of reading as well, and there have been some more deaths recently. So what I would say is, is that it's still important to take it seriously. And I don't know the number of people vaccinated versus not vaccinated in that death rate, but I think that would be interesting to find out if there's a modification of the virus or if the vaccines are actually still holding up pretty well.
Right. And he doesn't, the one thing that he's not including in his report anymore is the number of people vaccinated in the county. And I don't know if it's because it's harder to track first dose, second dose boosters, and kind of keep that all straight. So maybe it's becoming so pervasive that it's harder to furnish that data. So, thank you.
Very good. Yeah.
Also, on that note, I know with the at-home testing now, I think they don't have a real gauge on who's actually positive. There's probably a lot more people, you know, doing the at-home tests and then just self-quarantining or putting on a mask, staying away from people for a couple days. So those numbers are out the door as far as testing.
Absolutely. In the last, I would say, if I could jump in, in the last week and a half, I think I personally know about six people weren't feeling well, self-tested, were positive, didn't do anything but stayed home, slept, drank fluids, and got better.
That's unreported.
And retested. Yeah, it's unreported. So everybody's doing a good job of understanding the rules of the road and being good citizens socially and, you know, doing what they need to do to quarantine and not hurt other people.
But that positivity rate could be over 20%. I mean, who knows?
Could be. Yes, sir. Thank you. Good point.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we'll go to F9. Commissioner Constance.
Yes, sir. This is the item on the stabilized parking at Bay Shore. I'm just going to stay consistent with my vote. I'm not, I don't have an issue with the group selected. It's just, I'm still not going to support the item because I don't know that it's time yet. So, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Move F9.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Is there opposition to the motion?
Opposition, sir.
And we've got one in opposition, so it passes four to one. And that's with Commissioner Constance to send. Okay. That dispenses with our consent agenda. We'll go straight into our regular agenda item, which is impact fees. And we have Clerk Job coming forward to do the presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just give me a second to open up the presentation. So, good morning, Commissioners. For the Record Clerk, Judge Assistant County Administrator. I'm here to follow up on some tasks from our last meeting around impact fees and hopefully try and answer some questions. So let me just run through the presentation. I'm not going through the same presentation that I've done for the last two meetings. This is different. The action items for the last meeting were, or for this meeting will be discussion and direction on impact fee rates, and if you so choose to set a public hearing for June 28th at 10:00 a.m. So from the last meeting, there were a couple of things that we, that came out that you wanted more information on. One of those being around impact fee allowed uses, the other being the impact fee methodology and credits, and the final one being funding and projects specifically using impact fees. So I'm going to run through the first two, and then Gordon's going to run through the financial piece with you. First of all, I wanted to touch on what impact fees can be used for, and this is directly out of the statute, and this is, this was actually amended during the last session. So you can see from that, impact fees can be used on, for the construction, reconstruction, or improvement of public facilities. And I've also highlighted there that it can be used for fire department vehicles, emergency medical service vehicles, sheriff's office vehicles, and police department vehicles, and school buses. So that was the piece, it was the vehicle piece that they added into the statute and really created that definition. So it gives us an idea of what we can use impact fees for. Doesn't really change what we've been using impact fees for, other than we have in the past used it for library collections, which doesn't seem to be something that we can use at the moment, although we are still looking into that. So the second area that we wanted to talk about was around the impact fee credits, and these are included in the technical study, the Duncan and Associates Technical Study from January of 2021. And this is, the language on the screen now is taken directly from the study, as is most of this information that I'm going to present. So impact fees should be reduced to account for new development. Non-impact fee funding that will be used for capacity-expanding improvements. So it's trying to give a credit for alternative, other sources of funding that are going to be used. And it uses historical data to estimate what that credit is going to be, except for the debt. Obviously, we have a good idea of what the debt is. So types of impact fee credits can be gas tax-
So let me just run through the presentation. I'm not going through the same presentation that I've done for the last two meetings. This is, this is different. The action items for the last meeting were, or for this meeting will be discussion and direction on impact fee rates, and if you so choose to set a public hearing for June 28th at 10:00 a.m. So from the last meeting, there were a couple of things that we, that came out that you wanted more information on. One of those being around impact fee allowed uses, the other being the impact fee methodology and credits, and the final one being funding and projects specifically using impact fees. So I'm going to run through the first two, and then Gordon's going to run through the financial piece with you. First of all, I wanted to touch on what impact fees can be used for. And this is directly out of the statute, and this is, this was actually amended during the last session. So you can see from that, impact fees can be used on, for the construction, reconstruction, or improvement of public facilities. And I've also highlighted there that it can be used for fire department vehicles, emergency medical service vehicles, sheriff's office vehicles, and police department vehicles and school buses. So that was the piece, it was the vehicle piece that they added into the statute and really created that definition. So it gives us an idea of what we can use impact fees for. Doesn't really change what we've been using impact fees for, other than we have in the past used it for library collections, which doesn't seem to be something that we can use at the moment, although we are still looking into that. So the second area that we wanted to talk about was around the impact fee credits. And these are included in the technical study, the Duncan and Associates Technical Study from January of 2021. And this is, the language on the screen now is the, is taken directly from the study, as is most of this information that I'm going to present. So impact fees should be reduced to account for new development. Presupposed non-impact fee funding that will be used for capacity-expanding improvements. So it's trying to give a credit for alternative, other sources of funding that are going to be used. And it uses historical data to estimate what that credit is going to be, except for the debt. Obviously, we have a good idea of what the debt is. So types of impact fee credits can be gas tax, sales tax, ad valorem, grants, state and federal monies, and transportation debt. And this next, sorry, not, don't miss one. This next slide I've got is a summary of the credits that were used across the study. So you can see for each of the different categories, different credits were used. On transportation, the credits were gas tax, transportation debt credit, state and federal credit, and grants, and sales tax, but no ad valorem component because we don't use ad valorem on transportation. But on all of the others, the credits are ad valorem and grants that we, and other revenues that we've, we've come, we've, we've generated. So you can see what those sales tax credits are. This is the annual credit. It's used, so the, the gas tax, the state and federal credit, the ad valorem, and the grants are used by taking those figures over the last 12 or 11 years, depending on the category, and then dividing them down to give you an annualized, then it's taken down again to give you a credit per unit, per category. And that's what's taken off the, the actual impact fee. The study does a much better job of explaining it than I do.
Okay, can we pause right there?
Yes.
Commissioner Deutsch?
Thank you. Claire, could we go back to definitions for just one second? You know, under definitions, I think we, it was pretty implicit that first responder vehicles are included, you know, the fire equipment. But we don't include marine vessels, or do we? It's not defined there that, I didn't notice that, you know, but, you know, in terms of public safety, there's as great a need there. I was just wondering why we didn't do that.
So this is directly from the statute. I would say that, I mean, I would argue, I don't know what the attorneys would argue, but I would argue that those marine vessels were part of the equipment, the capital equipment that we need to operate that department. So I would say that it's probably allowed.
I would think.
I defer to the attorneys on that one, though.
Okay. Jeanette, maybe you could just check into that for future new use because we know that public safety on the water for both the sheriff's office and the fire department is becoming a greater and greater issue. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Constance?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, that's a good point. I mean, a vehicle, vehicle could be on the water, and it isn't specific to roadway vehicles. So that's a good point. My only question was the definition of transportation debt credit. So explain, it's, I'm hearing both things. So is it...
So let me, if you can, let me just run through. I've actually walked through the transportation credits, and that's one of the things. So you'll see where we've taken that, that figure from, or they studied up that figure from. So this is the summary of the annual credits, which, like I said, I'm going to go through the, the transportation as an example because that's the most complicated one. The text at the top is directly out of, well, everything on these slides is directly out of the study. So you can see when we're looking at the transportation debt credit, we're using debt specifically from Burnstall Road widening two to four lanes from 41 to Notre Dame and Notre Dame to Zimmel. So we're using actual debt that the county's carrying, and then extrapolating that to say that has a decrease, a credit, that equates to a credit of $4 on every vehicle maltraveled for the impact, when we're calculating the impact fees. The calculations are all in the study. It's way more complicated than I'm...
So an interchangeable term would be transportation financed credit?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. So running through transportation, this is the state and federal transportation funding credit. So this is what we've received from state and federal sources throughout the last, I believe this one's 11 years. So what they've done here is take that amount, taken it to an annual amount, and then taken it down to a vehicle maltraveled amount, which equates to a $101 credit for each of those, for each of the categories. Again, we've done the same for transportation non-sales tax credit. So this is where you see the local gas tax, and you see the grants. Again, exactly the same methodology, taking it down to the annual, then to the actual credit per vehicle maltraveled. And then finally, the sales tax credit. And this was the one where we were waiting for sales tax passing or not passing because it takes an estimate of what we anticipate spending on sales tax projects and takes that out of the equation. So you're giving a credit for this, for the sales tax projects. And this is the summary of the vehicle mile of travel reduction because of all those credits. So every, the cost, the cost per vehicle mile of traveled of the construction is $386. When you take off that, those credits, that $4, the 101, the 47, and the 13, you come down, excuse me, I've got a frog in my throat this morning, you come down to $221 per vehicle maltraveled. So then we were asked to look at the funding shortfall and surplus. So I'm going to hand over to Gordon here to do this piece. What I've done, he gave me some methodology of how he arrived at his calculation. So I've actually put that on the screen here, so it's there for you. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Gordon Berger, Director of Budget Administrative Services. Tried to keep the framework of these consistent so that, you know, you can compare apples to apples. So what we did was, for each of the categories, I backed out all the sales tax projects because actually the specific questions you were asking about specific projects, whether or not impact fees were applicable or not, it just happened that those were all sales tax projects. So as we backed those out, it kind of, it kind of alleviated that issue. Kept everything at 100% in terms of the projected impact fees, and then kind of showing a cumulative surplus shortfall. And then what I'm doing is, when I get to the last slide, you'll see it, projected what we anticipate receiving from ad valorem, but under those three scenarios we've been talking about. Rapid population growth, inflation hanging on, and hitting a recession. So you get a range of dollars because I don't want to put a dollar amount out there and it's like, oh, well, you said we get that much. It's a range of dollars. The other thing that I did when we get there is, we, of course, received the preliminary evaluations June 1st, which were much, you know, I had built 9.5% in, which I knew was conservative, but I didn't know it was that conservative. And we got a significantly higher evaluation. So I've built those into the projections so that when you look at this, you're looking at with, with this year's preliminary evaluation built in. So each one of these, again, these, you'll recognize these, same as last time. The difference is, I took out all the sales tax funding and the applicable projects that it would be applied to. So you can see, you look across here, we're looking at in transportation, overall shortfall for that CIP window of about $28 million. On the sheriff's projects, again, looking at overall, that, that six-year window, you're looking at a shortfall of about $8.4 million. On the public safety projects, much lower in scope, but a shortfall of about $2 million over that time. And then parks and recreation projects, actually a surplus over that period of time. Now, keep in mind, we are right now, I should have said this at the beginning, right now, we are updating the CNA for, the budget process is going to start this December, for the next two years. We are updating that CNA right now, and I can guarantee you, the costs that you are seeing on all these projection sheets are going to go up a little bit, and there's going to be more moving into the window. So I don't want to say we've got plenty of money for parks because you'll see that's not the case when we come back in December or February. Library, and here, over that six-year window, a shortfall of about $5.7 million. And then on governmental buildings, shortfall of about $1.1 million over that period of time. So what I did on this summary slide is showed each one of those as just one line item coming across. So when you add those all up, we're looking at a projected shortfall of about $43, $44 million over that period of time. So then, as I said, ran capital project, or the, yeah, the ad valorem for the capital project fund projections, and this is the surplus after we back out all the maintenance that we would have each year under those three scenarios. So you can see, going from a range over that six years of about, a high end of about $63 million available, to the low end of about $46 million available. So, and again, that's building in growth, kept the same robust growth in there for 24, about 9%, and then dropped it down to 6.5 and 5 after that. So, you know, being a little bit conservative, but, but still keeping the growth in there. So you can see, under each of those scenarios, under the current projections, it would be sufficient to cover, and we would be able to, to fund our capital projects.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there are items on here that you've listed that are not even in the funding window. Some fire station replacements. I'm looking at the South County Annex replacement, and I thought that was supposed to be sooner. So you don't have a, you just don't have any, I guess you're saying it's not in this window? Is it the next year, or it's just hanging out there?
It's a sales tax project. So if I remove the funding, I left the projects here so that you could look back and see them, but I took the, I took the project cost out. That's where, that's where you see the blank lines.
Gotcha. Okay. So I thought you took the complete item out. No, you just took out the funding, the amount, and the, in the window, so it's just gone, but it's still there.
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
I guess what would have been helpful is just, you know, empty brackets in the year we would have funded, just...
Yeah.
Because I'm, you know, it would have helped. But that's perfect. I'm glad you did that because it makes it, from a number standpoint, but just, it's hard for me to look at certain things and go, where was that again? So, thank you, sir.
That's a great idea. I didn't think of that.
You can't even leave, you could even bracket it, leave the dollar amount in there, just indicate another funding source or something, put a different color on it. I think it'd be good.
Gordon, we all make a good team. That's how that works.
Yeah, we all, we all see things, you know...
That's how it works.
I like to have a sheet I can go back to and just know what's going on instead of several of them, but hey. Commissioner Doherty?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just, Gordon, just, great chart, and I appreciate you updating it based on the preliminary evaluations and so forth. Just curious, how did you, what was your methodology for going through those three categories? In other words, the accelerated population growth number, original number you had in there, almost like 53 million, very close to what you showed in that graphic in...
Yes.
In, in April at our workshop. So that kind of trued that up because I was guessing somewhere between 50 and 55 million. Bingo, there, there it is. How did you decide on the number going down to the extended inflation, then to recession?
Yeah. I actually used the same methodology that we used for the, for the March workshop. So I had the same, excuse me, same figures in there, same formulas to generate those projections off of that. And then when we got the preliminary evaluations, I just changed the first year and everything extrapolated off that.
Well, obviously, Commissioners, the second line, extended inflation, I think, has become a reality. So that, that second line, for sure, recession is iffy, you know, probably within the next two years, the way they're talking right now across the, across the globe, really. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Before, before Gordon goes away, I'm glad you got the memo and the pink tie. Number one. Number two, in these numbers, and I don't know, Gordon, if I need you up here, or Claire, or whom exactly, but the numbers for these projects that are still on the sheet, they haven't changed. And what do I mean by that? When I asked last meeting about, about these items, and I'm going to start with transportation, the Edgewater project, obviously, a portion of that is eligible for impact fees. Those numbers from the May 24th to today are the same. 100% of that project is not eligible for impact fees.
But, well, actually, I, I think it is. I mean, we'd have to do a legal thing, but when we looked into this, essentially, the way it reads is that if there's an expansion, the expansion is needed and it covers the entire cost. Now, keep in mind, that's also being funded through sales tax. A portion of, of sales tax is covering that. So we're not talking about covering the whole thing with impact fees. And here's the thing, you have flexibility as the board. The philosophy we use is, is, you know, we're going to watch the cash flow. So we're going to apply impact fees first. When we run in, when we run out of impact fees, or we run to the limit on impact fees, then we move to the next bucket of funding. So, you know, we don't, I'm not, that's why I'm doing this at a global level. I'm not demonstrating that, that we're funding specific projects with impact fees. They're all eligible, they all meet the criteria, and we can apply impact fees up to a level. And then we're going to be $28.5 million short that we can plug the gaps with, with project, capital project funding.
So my understanding is, is that, I'm going to take a fire station. A fire station replacement is not eligible for impact fees. But if you expand the fire station, the expansion portion is eligible for impact fees. And I would assume, and maybe I'm incorrect, that a roadway would be the same thing. Your expansion would be, you know, if you've got to upsize any pipes, all that upsizing cost would be paid for by impact fees, I would think. And then the expansion of a road project, any new landscaping, all that kind of stuff, that would all be eligible for impact fees. But I didn't think the repaving, so I'd like to see the law on that and maybe understand that a little better. I'm not saying that you're wrong or I'm wrong. I really don't know. I made an assumption.
Yeah. No, and I understand. And again, I'll defer to legal on that, but my understanding is, if we're widening the road, all of the work is required in order to widen that road, and it becomes fully applicable.
The other one that really stuck out, and there's, there's buildings in every category, what have you, that fall under that question, which taints the numbers if it's not, if they can be used for all transportation, those transportation numbers stay the same. I understand that. But when we have building replacements, then, and it doesn't apply to the whole building, I think the numbers should be reflective of what portion we are believing. 50%? You know, whatever that is, that we need to use those numbers to be more accurate on what our impact fees can be or should be. And the other one that got me is the Babcock Ranch Library at $10 million. That one, there's no way. There's a reason there's no way because they've got to build it, and we have to outfit it.
Yes. And that, that 10 million is, is just the outfitting of it. Now, keep in mind, it's...
What are we building?
It's very, very preliminary, and it could well be combined with the general government building out there because they're both to be hit about the same threshold. So keep in mind, that's, that's way out there.
Okay.
But, but it probably is some combination of those two buildings.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And we tried to eliminate anything that's, I mean, I don't, if you have a specific example, but I don't think there are any replacements on here.
Yeah, there are. Station 3, oh, you took it off.
Yeah.
That's right. Station 3.
Yeah, I think we removed, because they were all, they tended to be, it turned out by coincidence that they were all sales tax projects. So as we removed them, we pretty much removed the buildings that were replacements.
Have we identified when we're going to need to add another house in West County? Because I know that's on the table, but it's not in the window.
So we're still waiting for the Fire Master Plan study to come out, which I'll, I'll talk to, to that.
Okay. Do we have an idea timeline?
Within the next month or so.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Doherty, and then Commissioner Deutsch.
Ms. Chairman, I'm going to wait till a couple of more slides when she's showing the, the total impact fee list. I've got some questions relative to the various categories and some of the methodology when we get, get to that point. But I'm all set right now.
Okay. Commissioner Deutsch?
Thank you. Isn't the base, Gordon disappeared. All right. Either you or, it doesn't matter, but the, the basic rule of thumb here, as I interpreted this in a very simplistic, basic way, is we're looking to compensate for the additional incremental costs that we need to maintain the standard of life that we have for the community as a direct result of increased population. Now, that's, that's coming, that's a simplistic definition, but that's the way I read it. So therefore, if we have a fire station that needs to be replaced but also expanded because of the increased population of the neighborhood, wouldn't that expansion part of the replaced, that expansion part of, of the replace, replace facility be eligible?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I, I just thought we had a gray area there, but appreciate it.
Okay. So running on to the, the next section in the, in the presentation, I've just put in there our current fee schedule for your information, and then what it would look like at 100%. So you'll see what each category looks like at 100%, and I apologize, it is a little difficult to see on the screen. I've also done a comparison of all of those categories of what they are at the current fee, and then at 100%, so you can see that.
Okay. Commissioner Doherty, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. And Claire, if you could back up to that slide.
Which one?
And first of all, I want to thank you, thank Gordon, everybody, really, getting all this information together, sorting out the sales tax projects, showing us the, what you believe are the impact fee related projects, and all the work that went into the capital projects fund numbers and everything. It's really very, very helpful. What I, in my last effort relative to this, this task, I decided to, and, and by the way, great job on explaining the credits and so forth relative to transportation. I didn't have much of an issue with those, as long as we can true up the cost model part of it, make sure we're okay there. I'm, I'm at the same place I was before relative to transportation. My concern, commissioners, are the other categories. If you look at parks and libraries, the basis for this, the service unit, I guess, in that is equivalent dwelling units, E2Us. And so I went back, tried to figure out, what did, what did Duncan use for their assumptions? When they, when Duncan's study. So I went back, and where you find this, and Sean could load it up if, but I'll just give you the reference so you can look at it later. You have to go to Appendix A. I never look at the appendices in detail, you know. I did this time, last three or four days. In the appendix, it's called Existing Land Use, it's page 68, Table 64. Duncan's assumptions were, he was using the 2010 census. The 2010 census. And he then added to it what he believed were gonna be, or were the, using single family, the, the permits that were issued for the next 10 years. Because we're basing it on the year 2020. Everything's, I believe, Claire, based on 2020.
Yes.
So what he was trying to do is get the 2010 census numbers estimate to what they'd be in 2020. He has in this thing for single family detached, 10-year permits from 2010 to 2020, to get a 2020 number, he added to the 2010 number 6,337 permits in 10 years. 630 per, per year. Not even close. So what I'm worried about with that, I need that all validated, if I'm reading this correctly. We're, we're basing everything on what we're doing right now, on extraordinary circumstance, everything, on explosive growth. Doesn't seem like, well, he didn't know what it was. He couldn't, we have the 2020 census right now, which we could go back, I think, and, and true this up. That's, that's really what I'm looking for, is to see his estimates and see what the 2020 census actually said. The other thing that I found was, if you go to the public buildings section, Table 56, goes through the methodology, the methodology for fire and EMS, law enforcement, in jail, and public buildings is population. He's using a population of 141,525. And when you use that in your denominator, if it goes up, then your resultant, obviously, is a lower number. So I'm, I'm concerned, I need that, again, validated.
And I can answer a little bit about that. If you look in Appendix B and Appendix C, he talks about functional population.
Functional population.
Yes. And that's how he's extrapolated the true population down to the functional population, which is the 140,000.
I'm just concerned, commissioners, it may be all right, but I'm concerned that the assumptions he had to make, because he did not have the 2020 census. I think the right thing to do is to take the 2020 census with all these numbers and just see how, how it lines up. I, I need to know that. Otherwise, we could possibly, an al, like, I did a rough calculation, if you take public buildings for single family, $1,072 is what we would charge. I used, I just grabbed 180,000 and went through the math, the arithmetic. It drops it down to a little over $800. Okay. So just as an example, I don't know that I'm right. I need the, I need the professionals to go through it and see whether or not it needs to be adjusted. It may be fine. He may have hit it on, nail on the head, but I don't, I just don't have that good feeling in my gut that it's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Deutsch?
I gotta jump in, because I had some flashbacks. A lot of people may not know I've never talked about it before, but I was in a doctorate program at Brown University in demographics. And we were the ones, we brought it up over two years ago, we started talking about ape. The rest of the world began catching on about a year ago. You know, our population in Charlotte County is definitely over 200,000, probably 204 to 205, excepted now. And I remember when I, in fact, we kid about it, but I started saying 200,000, we were gonna hit it last winter. People were looking at me like I was nuts. And finally, we realized. And the one thing that this board has done, and we get complimented for it wherever we go, we've been way ahead of the curve. We're planning not five, not 10, we're 20, 30, 40 years down the road. And, and I think we've got to keep our eyes open and realize that it's important to do that, because we don't know where this population is going. But I haven't seen, you know, they talked about a slowdown. I really haven't seen it. Maybe we had a tiny dip. Maybe we had a tiny dip. But our population is still growing. And if we want to work to maintain the quality community we have, we've got to keep looking down the road. You know, certainly the aggressive approach we're taking to finishing Edgewater, well, you know, what we're doing, and Chris has been behind us and helping push us, but what we've, we've been doing with Harborview, and we gotta look at King's Highway, and we have to look ahead to do that. But, you know, we, we probably have the, we probably have some of the best roads in the country, right here in Charlotte County. But we also have to be aware of the fire stations, you know, the sheriff's office, and we've been doing that. But let's not lose, and you kid me about the, the ape thing, Gordon, but you became a believer too. And we're there. And, and I think we have to realize that and keep looking down the road and looking down the road. And I'm just gonna put a commercial in, that's why I'm talking about, we gotta seriously start looking at, talking now about a second crossing of the Maiaque, and even working out what's happening in Punta Gorda. Because they're not gonna be able, the way they are now in Punta Gorda, they're not gonna handle, they're not gonna be able to deal with the traffic coming over that bridge in three or four years. And so there's gonna have to be a bypass, there's gonna be another, we've got to look at that stuff. And we've been doing a good job. And we remind each other about it, so it's, I'll be the, I'll be the, the pusher right now. But I think we do it together. And that's, and that's why we've been staying ahead of the curve. But we've got to keep doing that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Doherty?
Just want, want clarification. If, if the board is going to direct us to go back and, and look at the assumptions, I don't, I don't look at the appendix either. But I'm, I'm nervous about looking at one set of assumptions, because my guess is, he used assumptions about inflation also. So I would be nervous about looking at just one set of assumptions. And so if, if we're gonna receive that direction, you know, it, it require a lot more work, but I, I would wanna, you know, be more comprehensive about it than that.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Chairman, I, really what I'm trying to communicate here is that he based, most of his stuff, he based, and it, got it treed up to 2020, Claire. And I'm just concerned with the basic parameters he used for those categories, whether or not, now that we have the 2020 census, and we can actually look at the, the number of units, and see how close that is, the population that, see if he was accurate on that. The arithmetic is not complex. It really isn't. So I just think, it, to go out, if, I just want to be in a position that we can adequately defend the numbers. If we're gonna charge someone $1,072 for their new house for public buildings, that we're comfortable that that 141,000 figure he's got for pop, uh, functional population is, is what it was in 2020. He, he didn't have the census. We now have the census. So he had to make a guess. He made a guesstimate. I'm not faulting Duncan, but I'm just saying, he
His census is low.
He made a guess. And now that we have the accurate information, that's all. I, I guess that's what I'm saying, Gordon. It's just a matter of those, those couple of units. If, if, if we find a significant deviation, then I think we are possibly looking at a bigger picture to, to evaluate. That's all. That's the best way I can explain it, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Olden.
Commissioners, I was just gonna say, you certainly can do another study, but I think legally, as far as your acceptance of the Duncan study, it's just that, it was a study of the most recent data that was available at a given point in time. So, and the 2020 census data wasn't available then. So I think you're on solid ground, accepting that study with all of its assumptions in it. Now, if you want to do another study, that's totally in the prerogative of the board.
Why would it not be proper to use the Bieber numbers? They're more accurate.
You could do that.
I'm just, I didn't question it at the study, I didn't, you know, but it seems to me, if you want to have accuracy, you need to have the right population numbers in play. I've read a report from a project that's coming into Charlotte County, and we're over 204,000 people. We're not quite 2045, but we're over 204,000 people. And I just think we need to have the numbers right. I, I don't, I don't know what that looks like. You know, I think that the inflation numbers have to be included. I don't disagree with that, Gordon. I think if we want accuracy, we, we want accuracy. But I think the dot, the population has to be considered more appropriately to get the numbers right.
I would add that the methodology that was used in this study, I believe, was the same methodology that was used in the Tindall Oliver study, so that functional population calculation and using the data from the Census Bureau. So it's not inconsistent with what we've been doing in the past.
I'm not arguing inconsistency, but I'm arguing accuracy. That's, that's, that's my thing.
All right. So let me just carry on with the presentation.
Yep.
You have your comparison there of impact fees, the current fee, and that, what it would be at 100% for each of the categories. I did some comparables, or Community Development did some comparables for me. This is 2,000 square foot, single family home. We use that number because it's kind of the average. And some jurisdictions still do a per square foot calculation. You can see at the moment, we are the lowest for single family. If we went to 100%, we'd be pretty much in the middle at $9,789. And that's all I have for you.
All right, Chairman.
Chairman, my, my only comment, if I could jump in here.
Yeah.
I, I completely understand what Commissioner Doherty's saying, but I have to agree with the attorney. We accepted the report, and so that's what we gotta work off of. I think, maybe last meeting, or the meeting before, or several other meetings, I've said, well, why don't we just go out for a new study? I don't think, I don't think it's reasonable to tweak certain parts of this, because you, you, you get really into the minutia. Do you, do you start putting inflation into the report? Do you start, if you're looking at the most accurate current numbers for population? I mean, the problem is, you're gonna start changing a few things. And right or wrong, I get it, we want more accurate information, or a more accurate result. But, I mean, that's not what we do for a living. That's what Tindall Oliver or Duncan does. So, you know, I, I don't know if, I just don't know how to proceed if that's what you want to try to do, because I think now, even though, in theory, you're putting in more accurate numbers into certain things, ultimately, I, I don't know that you can defend it, because somebody can come up and say, well, wait a minute, you've tweaked Sections 2, 3, and 4, or Appendix A and B, but you didn't do these other ones. And so we think you've skewed it the other way, and now we have an argument that it doesn't work. I, I don't know. I just
They have the same argument now, though, that we have more accurate information that we could include, that we're not using the most current data, and we're not including the population that we have. And I agree, we should have the inflation numbers in there.
I, okay, I, I mean, I get all that. I just, I wonder what's going on in other municipalities. I mean, I think they just basically accept the study. Do we know anybody else that's, you know, doing a look back and, and changing things? They just accept the report and base it on those numbers. I, is that, is that not generally what's going on out there?
Generally, although I haven't talked to any other jurisdiction specifically.
I'm just, you know, I, I, I get nervous about, about that. And then the other, only other question I had for Gordon, it's just, you, you know, you, you zeroed out the sales tax projects, but you left them in. But then you made a statement about Edgewater being part of its funded by sales tax. So just, I think for future, maybe some of those, even though you don't, you're not zeroing them out, put an asterisk, so we can kind of, like, in our minds, go, okay, there is another source of funding here, other than purely AdVulorm, or, or whatever the source is. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Seale?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Well, I appreciate staff putting together this report. It's almost like a staff-level technical report, on top of the technical report that we already adopted. And it looks like the net results of what you've provided is, we have a shortfall in all those various categories, questionably parks and rec, but that's at this moment in time, as we know with inflation, and I think, as Gordon said, that number's probably gonna change. So I do appreciate the work. It's, it's a lot of work, putting this together. You know, if we're gonna base this on the most accurate information, which we did according to statute at the time, and we are consistent in how we adopt our technical reports, we went through, it was probably over a year of debating the technical report. We went through it, we kept asking for more information, more information, and more information. We ultimately adopted it. And then we charged our impact fees appropriately with a discount that the board ultimately voted on. If we are now gonna base it on the most accurate information on population, we literally, every six months, or every year, have to redo the report. And what if it goes the other way? What if inflation moves, moves, and population doesn't? Do we now, does that trigger another technical report? I mean, at some ti, at some point, you have to say no mas. We went through the process that we go through. We all had an opportunity to question that technical report, the appendix, everything that was in there. And then we ultimately adopted it. We cannot have a moving target where we're directing staff, and I appreciate the due diligence and going through this exercise of understanding all the numbers that go into this. But at some point, you have to say, this is a technical report, the attorney just reinforced the fact that it's legally defensible, what we've already adopted. You look at the comparable chart, we are still less, if it's a competition thing, and we want to say, well, we don't want to be the highest county in, in Southwest Florida. We are still a great bargain in impact fees when it comes to the comparables. And everybody else is booming. Now, our rank and file taxpayers, I wish they'd get the same treatment, where we get to adjust their rates every couple of months and look at inflation. I'd love to take all our MSBU's, MSTU's, AdVulorm taxes that you're getting in your tax bill, and I'm gonna direct staff now to plug in the inflation numbers and see how it affects your wallet, and redo all those fees. Because if, they should be treated with equal protection, just because the industry, the construction industry wants their fees discounted, which is a pass-through to the customer anyway coming in here, why aren't we giving that same treatment to our rank and file taxpayer? Our seniors, the working poor, the people who have to make a choice between putting fuel in the tank and food on the table, why aren't they getting the same considerations as the construction industry? Are we now, for every assessment and every fee that we charge the taxpayers of Charlotte County, are we now gonna stop and readjust their fees for inflation? They're entitled to that, if we do this for the industry. They're entitled to the most up-to-date information in how we charge them. Every time we adopt a technical report for an MSTU or MSBU fee, or consultant's report, or staff input, and says, this is what the fee needs to be, we charge the fee, not a penny more, not a penny less. But for the construction industry, they get big, fat, juicy discounts.
Commissioner, it's not the construction industry that gets the charge of the
Listen, I have the floor, Mr. Chair.
I'm
I have the floor, Mr. Chair.
No, you don't.
I have, I'm not out of order. I have the floor.
You are out of order, because you're giving false information
You can take the mic when I'm done, Mr. Chair. I have the floor.
Okay.
Am I out of order?
You are out of order, because you're not
That's your opinion. That's your opinion.
You're not being honest.
Are you accusing me of lying?
I'm saying you're not being honest.
Well, I disagree. And you're out of order, sir.
I'm not out of order.
Yes, you are.
Not out of order.
You're out of order. I have the floor.
But, sir.
Unless you have a point of order.
I have a point
What's your point of order?
That you're not being honest with people.
Okay. That's, that's not in our board rules, sir. That's your opinion.
It's the same people that you're saying we need to be protecting, that can't afford their rent and can't afford housing.
Listen, we are still, look, number one, I'm just gonna go on the record, you're out of line, and you're out of order when I have the floor. Because if I want to sit here and call you out of order for every time I think you're giving misinformation, I could do that. But you're entitled to your time on the floor, and I can rebut it by queuing in and waiting for my turn. Okay? So I do queuing in and waiting for my turn. Okay? So I do disagree. You shouldn't interject your own opinion while I have the floor.
I'm not interjecting.
Just for the record.
Opinion, I'm interjecting fact.
Yes, you did. That's your opinion.
Oh, it's fact.
Well, look, Mr. Chair, at our last meeting, you said you could see all these fees so transparent, it's like a windshield, that we need to do something. That was the last meeting. And now, apparently, it's changed. But that's fine. That's your opinion. You're entitled to change. Okay? But here's the, here's the bottom line. We have a technical report. We've adopted it. It's legally defensible. Yet we sit here, I think it's been two years we've been haggling over these fees. It's unnecessary now. Now it's procrastination. Now it's procrastination. And the industry has come in here, and they've lobbied not to raise impact fees. Not only that, they do it in writing. It's part of the National Association Home Builders Legislative Directive, not to raise impact fees. And our local industry has adopted those same policies, not to raise impact fees. And that's fine. That's their policy position. I get it. I don't have a problem with it. But I'm a commissioner. And I have to look at the fees that we have here objectively, not subjectively. And I've objectively looked at the numbers, and that's why we hired a consultant, a professional that determines these numbers. And I've looked at it, the whole board looked at that. And we've adopted that. There wasn't one dissent on that technical report. It was unanimous that we've all, all adopted that. So as far as I'm concerned, we need to raise these fees to 100% to be consistent with the technical report. We are still going to be lower than the surrounding counties. And, Mr. Chair, finally, you know, I'm really upset. I'm really upset that you would say what you said. I think it's, it's not part of our decorum in how this board has acted in the past. And I'm not going to let it dissolve into something like that. I understand we each have our own opinion, and we also look at the studies maybe differently. But if we're going to get to the point where we call each other out in the manner that you did, then I'm just going to have to say something. I just don't appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Understood, sir. Commissioner Deutsch.
Any study, when the study is done, is taken at a point in time. They take the available data. They don't have any choice. If it hasn't been updated, it doesn't matter, because they're taking the closest, most reliable information they have at hand to conduct their study. That's obvious. We know that. However, and I disagreed with your no mas comment, which was probably about a half hour ago now. But the point is, we accepted the study. At that point in time, the study was valid. However, and I've pointed this out, because we can argue whether we're 204,380 people, or 205,000. We know what's happening. We see it. Is it going to change tomorrow? It certainly could. Or the next day? It certainly could. You know, I've been around a while. I've never seen the economy in such a bizarre state of flux as we are now. Are we going to, oh, you know, are we, you know, dealing with inflation? Are we going to have a recession tomorrow? What's happened in two days after that? And what this board has done, outside of, we've had a tradition of respect for each other, and we've maintained that, and I'd like to see us get back to that, we have to have the flexibility to realize that things change, and the ability to accept those challenges. But I don't think we, you know, at any, it's a point, it's, the study was at a point in time. Those are the facts. That's got, you know, unfortunately, that's the base of that study, and the study's valid, and we accepted it. However, stuff has changed since that study. And we're all aware of that. And it's those things that have changed that's going to influence the decision that we're going to make today, and what we're doing on anything that we do in the county. We know that inflation, all of our prices, you know, and we tend to be conservative, but we probably haven't been conservative enough when we start realizing what stuff's going to cost us. And we have that flexibility, because we look down the road and we look ahead. But this, we have to accept the study, but we also have to accept the reality that we're in a complex, changing time, that's consistently changing. You know, it's, it's not solid. It's moving. It's changing. It's, it's going to be different tonight than it was this morning. Look at the crazy stock market. And I don't understand the stock market. I never will. I'm not involved in it. I don't claim to be. But we have to have that flexibility. And I think we, you know, we have to deal with this. We have to make a decision. And we can only make it from this point in time, based on what we have and the new data that we get. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Doherty?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just want to clarify, make sure I communicated accurately to you what I'm looking for. Commissioners, I'm, I'm not questioning all of the data that's in the study. Duncan, I, I think I said that. I think all the, whatever he had for assumptions on inflation, I'm going to 2020, is in my brain. I want to be, what were the numbers in, not today, not the inflation today, not the cost today, because the study was based on 2020. What I'm simply saying, he made some assumptions on populations and units that are very critical, very critical to the ultimate answer on each one of these categories. So my question is, can we, with the 2020 data, which is, should be a lot more accurate, go look at it and true it up to 2020? Not to 2022, not go into all those things, just what should the numbers have been in 2020 if he had had the census? He didn't have it. So he had to make a guess. That's all I'm asking for, is the true data. That's what I'm looking for. I, if we, you're correct, Commissioner Deutsch, if we start going into all the other stuff, we, we might as well just do a new study, completely. Because all of it, it's just too many moving parts. But I, I just have a real, in my gut, I have a real problem that 141,000 functional population, 141,000, just doesn't sound right. And when he took the 2010 census relative to dwelling units, and simply added 6,400 more units for the next 10 years to get to a 2020 number, that doesn't seem right to me. So I just need, I just need staff to look at that based on the 2020, and then I'll be at a better place to, to, to make a decision. But I, I, I can't move ahead right now with those two parameters. I'm not going to get in, down into the inflation and truing it up to today's problems. Good grief. This list we have for projects, and what we're going to construct, could go south in a year and a half. We may not want to build some of these things with inflation, cost of fuel, everything else that's going on right now. So our expenditure side of this CIP may, may not happen. I, we don't know. We're not, not going to deal with that right now. That's just pure speculation. I'm just saying, now that we have 2020 census numbers, can we look at those and see how these critical parameters line up? That's all. That's all. And then staff can report back. And if it's substantially the same as Duncan assumed, I'm at a different place. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Seau, I apologize. Start, start there. I shouldn't have interrupted. I should have waited to get back in queue to have my say. So I apologize for that. I hope you can accept the apology and move forward.
I will stick with the fact that the homeowners are the ones that pay for it. The tenants are the ones that pay for it. So when we have this discussion, for me to have the most accurate information is the most important way to move forward. I agree with Commissioner Doherty. I think we need to true it up. And I would be good moving forward if we can get those trued up and have that number, those, those brought back to us in one-on-ones, schedule as we need to, whatever the board feels is appropriate. But I really do believe we've got to get the numbers correct. And I, I, I believe that because we have extreme knowledge that we're 60,000-plus people off, we're not nearly close to accurate. And we were, when this whole thing started, we were probably 40-some-thousand, 50-some-thousand off at the time. So anyway, that's, that's where I'm at. Commissioner Constance?
Thank you. So I, you know, the definition, according to Law Insider, of functional population, because I had to look it up, is the effective population served over the course of a day. Functional population accounts for residents, visitors, and workers traveling in and out of the city or municipality throughout the day, and calculates the presence of population at different land uses during the day. So I would argue that functional population is not actual population. Is that?
It's not.
It's not?
It's less.
Okay. So it's way less. So a, a functional population of 141,000 could be equivalent to an actual census population of 180,000?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be really accurate for, for that time. And also, you know, it's not that far off. We're talking, you know, 10% of where it is now. I, again, Commissioner, I understand where you're trying to go. My concern is changing any element of the report in, in an effort to make it, in air quotes, more accurate, because maybe it would be more accurate for a certain part. It taints the report, because now it is not, we accepted it. And I, I'm, now I'm veering off into legal areas that I'm not really sure about, but I really would ask for some guidance from the attorney. You know, is this something that is defensible to do it? Because even if it, if it were to prove, Commissioner, let me ask you this question. Here's the hypothetical. Let's say we go through this exercise, and we tweak a few things, and the numbers get worse, and now the amount that's 100% is even higher. I'm just saying, okay, you, now, because if it's lower, then, you know, who's going to argue with the fact that it's lower, because there's, they're going to have to pay less? But if it goes up, now we're really monkeying with things, and now we're in a pickle. Because now we say, well, you know what? Now we have all this new information, we've got these new numbers, so it's more, in air quotes, again, more accurate. I don't know that it's defensible. Could you help me out, please, Ms. Nolte?
I would agree with what you said. I think if you go and, and as Mr. Berger said, if you go and tweak the report, then you should be tweaking everything, like the cost of the projects, because that is the most current, which is basically a new study. So the statute says it's a study based on the most recent data available at the time. Data, by definition, is something that occurred yesterday, or the day before that. It's in the past. It's not, the statute does not say current information.
Okay.
It's the most recent available data.
Right. And it's-
And you accepted that study.
All of the data at one time in a snapshot, and that's what it's being evaluated.
Correct.
Not bits and pieces corrected. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
So it is, it is legally defensible as it stands, and you accepted that study when it was presented to you, and again, when you did the extraordinary circumstances. But it's clearly the board's prerogative if you want to do another study.
Commissioner Doherty?
Yeah, I was just going to add that the, the sensitivity I have to this is relative to the fact we based our extraordinary circumstances, most recent one, on explosive growth, population stuff. So I'm saying to myself, I just want it true, I want it confirmed, that staff can look at the 2020 numbers, true census numbers, and make sure that we're, we're in good shape, relatively speaking, substantially consistent, that his numbers are, he made some big assumptions here. And, and, because he didn't have the census. That's all I'm saying. So if, if, if staff comes back and says, yeah, it's within 10% or some reasonable deviation, I guess we're, we, we make that choice at that point. Right now, I don't, I just don't know. And that's what I'm concerned about. I just look at the numbers, and the, when I see you used the 2020, 2010 census, and then did some adjustments of, what, 6,300 units for 10 years, it just seems low, Commissioner. It just seems low. And that affects libraries and, and parks. So that's all I'm trying to get to, is that denominator, is that denominator act, I'm not going to get into the numerator, because I mean, that could get really dicey. But if we're not substantially off, we're at a different place. And then I'm, I'm ready to make some, some, some decisions relative to how we integrate the, what we found about the Capital Projects Fund, how we do certain categories, all that other discussion. I didn't want to go into that yet, until I knew that we were working with numbers that we can defend. I, I use that word, I, I selected that word. Because I, I, we were warned at the last meeting, that could, there, we could be facing a challenge. That's all. So I just want to be, put the organization in the best place possible. And the recommendation from the county attorney's office, and staff may be, stick with what we've got. I, I, and I respect that. Okay?
Very good. Anything else?
Can I just ask procedurally, do you want that brought back to you at the next meeting, or in one-on-ones? How do you want me to move forward with this?
I think walk it around, and then if it needs to be added to the agenda, put it, put it on the agenda. So plan for both.
Okay.
You may not need both. I'm just saying, it just, you know.
Okay.
Okay. Does that make sense to everybody?
May I make a recommendation?
You may.
Since you have the item, I would say just repeat this item on the 28th, because you also want to set a public hearing if you go that direction.
Yes.
Okay. We can do that.
Very good.
So do we need a motion to set a public hearing?
No, we'll do that at the next meeting.
It'll be on the next agenda?
We'll have that on the next agenda.
Okay.
All right. I have to do a little work here, guys. I apologize. I was supposed to pull F-11, because I have a conflict. And it was on consent, and I didn't think about that. So, Ms. Nolte, do I have to reconsider one item, or pull the whole?
I would just move to reconsider the approval of the consent agenda for the purpose of pulling F-11?
Yes. Okay.
So moved. Second?
Motion and second. Is there opposition to the motion? Hearing none, it passes. I will pull F-11, and I'll entertain a motion on the balance.
So moved.
Motion, second discussion. Hearing none, opposition. Balance is approved unanimously. F-11, I do have a conflict on. This is a property that we've been working with the owners for a while, for a development of a restaurant. And they had donated this land to the county, and had to buy it back, so they had enough space. So it's a little easement area, and then they have to do an agreement of easement with the county again. So I'd entertain a motion for F-11.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Everybody understand?
All right.
We good? Okay. Is there opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition, it passes four to zero. And I'm abstaining, and I will have the form filed appropriately. Diane's already working on that. So, all right. We have no public hearing, no presentation. We have public input. Is that for one today? Is that supposed to be at one?
It's now.
It's now? Okay. Go ahead, then. We'll open up public input. Any, any county-related subject, you may come forward, state your name for the record. You have up to three minutes, and you can address the commission as a body.
Yes, I'm Patricia Harris. I am a member in the Ackerman Project, the sewers. And don't get excited, gentlemen. Everything's going beautifully there. The workers are great. They're very courteous, and they're mindful of the property owners. Even though I was not at first in favor of this project, I have to say, they're done, they've done a beautiful job. However, I do have a problem with the Health Department, of which I'm not sure you are aware. And if you are not, you should be. I have an ATU unit. You are charged for your permit once every two years. Now, I have talked to them in Tallahassee. I've talked to them here many times. I have names and times of different people. The problem is, they want to charge us for two years, starting July 1st of '22. Now, I have no objection to paying for the seven, eight months, even the year, because we know we will have it within the next year. That is not agreeable with them. I'm sorry. I don't see how you can charge someone, whether you be government, private individual, or a corporation, for something these people are not going to be able to use, and you cannot provide. You cannot charge me for two years for something I'm not going to use. However, they've told us there will be no refund. Like I said, I don't know whether you can do anything about this, or whether you have any input into this, but I would definitely appreciate you looking into it. Because frankly, you don't mind paying for what you have, or what you use. But I certainly object to paying for something I'm not going to use. Thank you very much. And by the way, today is also the 240th anniversary of the founding of the U.S. Army, of which my husband happened to be a member.
Thank you. Hey, thank you.
Hello, gentlemen. My name is Robert Ely of Ely Electric Services. And I'm coming to you today about longshoreman's insurance again on the waterways. Speaking with the building department, the biggest problem with them for requiring proof of USLNH longshoreman's insurance is simply not being able to identify what navigable waterway is. The easy part about that is that it is defined by Army Corps of Engineering. We require permits on, to be reviewed by the Department of Environmental Protection and the Army Corps of Engineering if it's on a waterway. If it's reviewed by the Department of, I mean, the United States Corps of Engineering, then it is in fact a navigable waterway. Those permits could be required to have USLNH. And that's my suggestion to you, is instead of saying just every waterway, like I previously said, is that we make it to where any permit that has to go on a review of Department of Environmental Protection or the Corps of Engineering, those permits require proof of longshoreman's insurance before issuing them. Florida State Statute 440.092 clearly states that they do not cover, workers' comp will not cover any injury or death on the waterway, on navigable waterway. We're allowing contractors to put their employees at risk for no reason on the waterways when we could simply have the building department require proof of USLNH like they formally did. I'm sorry, I'm really nervous when I'm up here.
Okay.
But, yeah. Charlotte County is able to. We have the Home Rule Charter. Where we want to protect our people in this community and the people are expecting change. The building department is using weaponized ignorance as an excuse of not allowing this by saying, we don't know what a navigable waterway is. There's no reason for us to enforce it. We don't have to enforce it, so we're not going to. But the people do need to be protected because they're unaware. Or at least put it on the permits that on navigable waterway, USLNH is required. Just simply put it on the permits. The meeting yesterday with Ben, the statement was, oh, well, we won't know how to answer the phone calls once they call and ask us. Well, let's figure out what a navigable waterway is if we can't make any kind of policy. It's, Charlotte County has 305 miles of navigable waterway. That is a study done. The regional waterway management systems and Charlotte County is unable to identify what navigable waterway is. That is disheartening. We are a waterway and we can't even protect it. So, please, let's do something. There's something I have to come to you for you to do change.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. I'll have to have legal look at that.
Richard Russell, Port Charlotte. Commissioners, inflation isn't going away. We've got to raise impact fees. Because since January of 2021, the inflation rate we're dealing with right now compared to prices then is probably over 20% based upon cumulative effects. And it will only get higher. How can we support fees, the current fees? Check all of the surrounding neighborhoods, and I believe they did check that. We're doing about half. We're charging half. Well, how are these other builders accomplishing the improvements for half the price that we're paying? Well, they're, you know, they're not. So we're a bargain. Why are we a bargain? We're fools? Kicking the can down the road also is only doing the builders a favor because it delays the implementation of the new fees. On another matter, Mosaic calculated the other day that they were going to have the workshop the day after a national holiday. Well, they still got a good turnout. And the newspaper reported, "De Soto Leaders' Residents Seek More Details From Mosaic." So Mosaic has agreed to add another workshop in December. They have one in July, they have one in October, and now they're going to have one in December. Well, we'll see, okay? Last year, after the one in November, they said they were going to have one in January of this year. Well, they only got around to it about four weeks ago before planning the one in June. Gaines Park is, and I've got these, I will send them out to you. Gaines Park is more than two times the size of the Port Charlotte Beach Complex. We're spending $10 million on a Port Charlotte Beach Complex? That money should go to Gaines Park. There's more room there? I mean, the Port Charlotte Beach Complex is basically built out. And you're going to put a 20,000-square-foot building to replace a 10,000-square-foot building? Let's stop and think about this one. Gaines Park is accessed by two curb cuts off the four-lane highway. Port Charlotte Beach Complex is a two-lane road through a neighborhood. You're impacting a neighborhood by making these improvements to Port Charlotte Beach Complex and you're turning away from Gaines Park. It could really be something at Gaines Park and people could get to it without going through someone's neighborhood. And lastly, I had a conversation with Mark Matthews last week. And I'm happy to announce that he's looking into some things that I've raised. And I appreciate whatever he can do to consider and come back with some suggestions. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. Seen another one rising, so we will go ahead and move forward. Gentlemen. Commissioner Doherty?
How about the administrator and the attorney?
Well, I can start with them if you want me to, since it's usually what we do. Mr. Forrest?
I do have a couple of items. If Mr. Shermerhorn is with us...
He's here?
Okay. Didn't look in the back, but wanted to give a mosquito control update. Thanks for the proclamation, for the awareness week coming up. And I think with the rains, Mr. Shermerhorn will have a good update for us.
All righty.
Thank you.
You're walking like I am.
Is the ear button green?
Button is green.
Good, there you go.
For the record, it's got Shermerhorn Director of Mosquito Control for Charlotte County. Thank you for the proclamation. I appreciate it. And I know the staff will definitely appreciate it. It came a little bit earlier than we anticipated. So obviously, people are definitely very efficient. So again, thank you. Why I'm here is to give you a quick update on some of the actions that we are taking regarding the outbreak that we have every year of the salt marsh mosquitoes, the AD solistans and the AD teeny orangus at this point. Our first outbreak, we managed to rain in just before the holiday with some granular applications. And we did quite well to hold it off. Unfortunately, we then got additional rains. And you've heard the story before, but when we have a very, very dry winter, the eggs overwinter. They don't get flushed out. They don't get predated on by other creatures. And so they just build up and they build up and they build up. And then when the water comes, they come off in droves and droves and droves. And I sympathize with those people that are out next to the state lands. As Commissioner Doherty has said in the past and will continue to say in the future, they don't necessarily recognize political boundaries. They are very strong flyers. They have a principle of simply surviving, breeding, taking blood meals. On the plus side, at least with these two species, they're not known to carry a host of arboviruses that would cause human illness. There are some reports in the literature that they may carry some dog heartworm, but that's not always 100%. So we do have a little bit of a break there. What we are looking at in the future as we get more rains is will the marshes get enough water so that they will flood and thereby reduce the number of eggs that can be laid and break that cycle? That's the natural way of having mosquito control. Unfortunately, we can't take that chance because we have too many people making complaints. We've got 300, 400 complaints in Assala. We managed to knock a bunch down, but people don't necessarily understand that, well, we can knock down 10,000 mosquitoes a night. The next night, there's going to be another 20,000 that take their place. And so there's a lot of people who think, well, the material isn't working. Well, we have the data to show the material and products that we have. We put them in, literally collect them, put them in cages, run the material by them and look at the mortality after time. You know, as long as that mortality is 100% or 90% within the first 30 minutes to an hour, we know we're in good shape. We have been experimenting with another product from aerial applications. We have the same data for that. It was, emphasis on "was," a little bit less expensive than the diabrom that we were using. It has an advantage of not being as corrosive. However, as I said, was, due to the economy, the chemical productions, you name it, all the buzzwords that you hear, they're actually true. Getting the material here has caused the price to be equal to or higher than. That being the case, I'm going to be going back to diabrom. And we do have a stock. And that material is shown to be the most effective. It also has the quickest breakdown period into carbon dioxide and water after it's released into the environment. The full moon is obviously going to push the tides a little bit. We've been watching that. It's a beautiful moon. If you hadn't gotten out to see it last night, it was great. Tonight, hopefully, you'll see it, too. And you should see our helicopter. We will be doing another aerial mission tonight. As far as missions in the last week, we are using all the available resources that we have at the current time. Just facts and figures. We've done 30 ground missions in the last week and a half with the trucks. We've had five aerial missions that we had to call in our contractor for, Vector Disease Control International, because the helicopter either was not ready or the pilot said flown a larvicide mission and didn't want to fly another mission. We're working on some hiccups like that so that we can avoid that from occurring again. The other avenues that we're taking is that we're moving some traps, some of the automated counting traps that run off either a battery or solar. We're moving one out to El Jobein and there is one in South Gulf Cove. The landing rates are giving us plenty of justification for treatment. That's not the issue. The issue is we have a lack of, or a finite amount of resources and people to get out there. Now, we're putting on another seasonal person. As soon as HR gets through the background, that is going to help us. I apologize for saying, I'm trying to think of various things that might be important before I give you the question aspects. If what I expect happens, and this is the crystal ball, that we keep coming up with the hatches and the hatches and the larvicides that we are putting out are not making enough difference, I will be in contact with DEP and take advantage of our one of three chances to actually discharge material over the salt marshes themselves. Now, this obviously causes a lot of consternation with DEP and FDEX and so forth, but we did get that permission in our arthropod control plan. It took us two years to do it and followed the same, similar path as Lee County did. So we do have that option. It's not an option that I like to use lightly and it's not an option to extend it. We have three and that's it for the entire season. And the season goes on a long time. And it usually seems that it follows my luck in that we have these big hatches just before holidays so people can be absolutely miserable. So we're going to try to break that. With that said, we are putting out traps in the areas of El Jobein and another trap in the area of South Gulf Cove just to double our surveillance information. So that shouldn't be a problem. We will obviously have to do that kind of a treatment in-house with our rotary aircraft because there are concerns from liability aspects from the contractor. We can show them the plan. We can show them that we do have it. But they're still ingrained in that you read the label and it says, no, 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 you don't go over state lands. You don't go over water. And I get that, but that's why we'll be using our own in-house resources. We will continue the larvicide missions. We're running on average of at least once a week and we're pushing that up to two a week. And don't forget that we also have five larvicide ground vessels that are out putting BTI and S-methoprine into the dishes, dishes, into the ditches that are still holding water. One of our mistakes that we have made in the past years was trying to get the message out that standing water creates mosquitoes. And later on, when we're talking about Culix mosquitoes and mosquitoes that can carry arboviruses, that can be true. But I think we need to take a step back and revise our messaging in that not all standing water will breed mosquitoes. If that water disappears within two or three days, it's not going to breed the mosquitoes. If that water is running, if that water has been treated, it can stand there. It's not going to breed mosquitoes. Obviously, that was a mistake in messaging on my part and we're going to try to correct that over this year and in the future with our brochures and so forth. With that, that's pretty much what operations we are undertaking at this point. We've certainly gotten a number of strong suggestions from the folks in Assala on how we should be doing it. And it would be so much better if we contorted the angle of our sprayers to just spray around their house and a few others. But they mean well and we do prioritize, we have to prioritize what are the worst areas based on the numbers that we see. And we have to go down that list. And, you know, if we have someplace where we get a trap that has 300 mosquitoes and we have a landing rate of 120, we've got to hit that spot first before we can get the trap that has 50 mosquitoes and a landing rate of 12. It's just a matter of simple prioritization. With that, I would ask each of you to think about what questions that you'd like answered directly. And fire away. Here I am.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Doherty?
Scott, thanks for coming. We've seen the complaints. We hear the complaints. But bless you. I also hear that we're actively out there working on it. And I want to compliment you for that because people tell me that you're spraying and you're all over the place. So thank you for that. I just hope you don't run out of material before we run out of mosquitoes. The question, I just want to verify because I think I've seen, the ones that come out of the marsh that are the major problem now, those are the little tiny guys and not like the big ones from Jersey to pick you up and fly away with you. They're the little, little black ones, right?
Little black ones, little brown ones.
Yeah, they're around. But keep up the good work. Thank you so much. And we appreciate everything. And I know you're doing the best you can, so thank you.
I appreciate that. But we do, just for the record, we do have seraphera that hatch later on. And those are the ones that will carry away because they are almost that big.
Mr. Constance?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Scott, thank you so much. Very comprehensive report. Thank you for your dedication and your team's dedication. And, you know, I think people don't really understand. You do tremendous work on a shoestring budget. I mean, we're always making sure you have, you know, the helicopter, the chemicals, the fuel, the trucks. Now, you're going to get another position. But, you know, if you compare your budget to Lee County, which, you know, they have a mosquito-controlled district and it's 25 or 30 million... twenty-five or thirty million now, what are they up to?
They're up to a little bit higher than that.
Yeah. I mean, it's incredible what the budget that they have versus what we have to do. So, I think that the job that you're doing on what we can afford is incredible, and yeah, you know, these are tough times. My question with regard to the science, though, about using, I don't know how else to describe it, but the nuclear option of spraying three times a year and being able to do those, do those sprays that you want to do to kind of knock it back, do you, I mean, you guys have done this long enough, is it, is it sort of wait till there's a big rain event, or hold it back before a holiday, or is it better to try to do it, like, at the very beginning of the season, to try to knock a whole bunch back and kill them off immediately, or do you wait until it kind of revs up? I mean, you, this is obviously more art than science, I think, because you're dealing with weather and all of these different things, but can you expand on that a little bit?
Sure. My position is await, follow the weather patterns, determine what the probability is in both my mind, my operational supervisors, and my two biologists. I rely on their input a great deal. We sit down and we say, okay, what are the chances do we really feel that we, marshes will be flooded within X amount of time? Then, we have to take a look at, well, what is actually hatching? Are we seeing a full hatch? Are we seeing just a partial hatch? And to answer your question directly, it's only when we start seeing a full hatch and we can't keep up with it, that we want to use that nuclear option. I don't necessarily spray around holidays just because I know that they're holidays, but it just seems to me that with my luck, it's Friday afternoon, and we have another hatch, and all of a sudden, you know, the complaints just go crazy. That's just anecdotal, and there's nothing really solid behind it, but you bring up two other good points that do stymie us. We are bound by weather. We can't obviously spray in the rain, and a lot of people don't know it, but we can't do ground-based applications when we have winds that are above twelve, fourteen miles an hour. So, we have to hold off, cancel them, see if they'll drop down, and then continue. And of course, it goes without saying that we still have to have the justification and numbers in some format, such that if FDEX comes down and says, well, why did you do this? We have to be able to say, because we were having a large hatch of pestiferous mosquitoes, such that we were receiving these many complaints. We went out and did landing rate counts, and we spotted this many back, this many mosquitoes. And we have traps where you can see the numbers and species of mosquitoes.
Does Lee County get three as well, or do they get more?
They get four.
They get four. Now, and again, this is kind of new to me, this particular angle, but, so, if you use your three every year, and I'm assuming you do, at some point, do you get to petition for four? You know, if you're developing a track record where you're showing good performance, but you could use another one, how did they get to four? You know, is it something?
They got to four because they have more barrier islands, they have more political pull, quite frankly.
That's what I was looking for. It's not science, it's who you know. Okay, well, we need to know that, because I think that's something that we can help you with.
Hate to say that on the record, but it is true.
Well, it's, listen, it's being able to advocate for your area appropriately, and you know, getting people to understand, hey, we have a lot of salt marshes, we have a lot of issues that would make us eligible for this. And so, you know, I'm glad we're hearing this, I'm glad it's on the record, we're going to, we're going to fight for you. You know, we need to do that.
Well, we, it did take a long time to get that approval, and I don't want to lose it, per se. There is a strong movement. Anything within a state land is supposed to be protected, no matter what it is, whether it's a mosquito, or an endangered dart, or a fish, or whatever, skunk ape. They are very, very particular about their mission, and I have to understand that. I will say that the contiguous counties to us are experiencing the same hatchoff. We're not alone. Collier County is running full bore. Lee County is actually ramped up a little bit for them. That means flying four or five airplanes instead of twelve. And Sarasota is actually doing some contract work, because it's getting bad for them, too. We identify more with the southern counties specifically because our national estuary and the harbor and the state lands have not been built up. I mean, if you go up to Sarasota Bay and you look around, you're going to see apartment buildings, retail buildings.
Hard for mosquitoes to live in those places.
Very, very difficult. Those are prime habitat for container-breeding mosquitoes, mosquitoes that will breed in some of the trash that's left outside the Hilton.
That's the part where you say, don't let the water stand?
Right.
As opposed to natural flow areas where it shouldn't be an issue?
Absolutely.
Which you spoke about.
That's, that's the absolutely succinct way of saying it.
So, the last thing is this, and I don't want the answer now, but if you can get to us, the budgets, just the number for Sarasota, Charlotte County, Lee County, and Collier County, just so we can kind of see, because we, you know, landmass is landmass, but I just want to know how those districts are funded versus us, because I think that puts it in perspective. I know we're the lowest, but I, you know, I just want to make sure we know this way when the administrator comes and says, we might need a few more resources, although I would hope that, you know, he just kind of works with you, and it doesn't have to wind its way back to us in any, in any major way, but it's easier for us to just go, yeah, that makes a lot of sense, let's move forward.
Well, I, I think that's fantastic, and I appreciate that. My goal is to use what we have.
Yes.
And use it efficiently. I don't want to have to come back and say to the administration, we have to have this or that. If we've done our planning right, then it may be tight, but we should be able to operate. But I, but I do appreciate that. And I will get some of the numbers with the caveat that there are some very strange things that happen, such as Sarasota's budget, all their administrative staff is paid under their health department side and not out of the mosquito budget. So, you know, you're mixing apples and oranges and putting it into a couple of different budgets, and all you can do is really take a quick estimate. The same thing applies really here with us on any mission, if you want a mission breakdown, unless we go through fiscal and we spend a lot of time. There's too many variables. Who's on overtime status? Who's not on overtime status? Are both people on overtime status? That brings the cost-permission up. What material? How many times they get rained out? You know, it just, all that is snapshots that I can't predict.
Well, thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay. Mr. Chairman, thank you so much, we appreciate your time. Thank you for that great report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for.
Thank you. Mr. Flores, anything else?
Thank you, Scott. Yes, just two, two more items, a quick update. This is regarding the cultural center, and you'll get more information on your twenty-eighth agenda. I got a quick phone call from the Charlotte Community Foundation. If you recall, they are funding the gap analysis study for the cultural center. They are finalizing their consultant, and like I said, we'll get more details from Ashley Marr on the twenty-eighth, she'll come and present to the board where they are with that.
Fantastic, because we've had a lot of constituents, we've been out a lot, and people keep coming up and saying, when's something going to happen? Is something going to happen? So, I really appreciate that update, because, you know, we're, it's not a year yet, but we're coming up on probably a year within the next four months, and we know things move slowly, so I'm really excited about that, and, and so, thank you for that.
Thank you. And then, the second item, I'd like to get some just feedback or comments, I believe we've spoken individually with each of you. This is regarding, staff is working on, looking at, working on a code revision. This is related to some parcel development and the tree language that's in there, so inventorying and sampling of the trees, and how we craft any revision to the ordinance on that. It would take a couple of months, we'd bring back to you, I think, in the late fall, early winter, so we're all ears.
Commissioner Seau.
Mr. Deutsch. Yeah, I just want to weigh in quickly. Thank you, Commissioner. The, it's all about the parcel size. Smaller parcels, I don't have any problem with the current code. I think larger sites, being a designer of larger sites in my past, it makes sense that we would take some kind of representative sample area that we've worked with staff and the engineers and surveyors for the development, but that threshold, that acreage, I need some feedback from staff as to what would be that threshold. But the larger parcels, I would be supportive of a sample area and then extrapolating that to determine the points and so forth, the required for the tree removal permit. Seems logical, and I, I've done it that way, so it does work, so. But the key is getting that sample area defined.
Mr. Cullen.
Thank you, Sean Cullen, playing zoning official. We have had some internal discussions on some of this, based on discussions with some larger of the property landowners. Some of the standards that we're looking at is maybe a minimum of ten acres for the sampling. We were looking at maybe ten percent or two acres, whichever is greater, that kind of, those kinds of options is what we're looking at, because at a minimum, I think, we would want to have, make sure we get a proper cross-section, so we won't just pick the most vegetative. We will work with them clearly to define the locations, but we want to have a big enough sampling size. We do understand some of these five hundred, six hundred acre parcels, it could take you eight months just to sample, or to inventory every tree on that property. We understand that. We are currently in discussions internally on how to move forward. We will engage some of those development professionals, as well as the environmental specialists that do work on those, for their input as well, to make something, some standards that are reasonable. And if you have any suggestions on a minimum you folks would like to see, we'd be more than happy to incorporate those. And this would not have anything to do with the fees, this would just be in order to determine the, an average of what the tree canopy is on those large properties.
Commissioner Seau.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I had a staff meeting with, with staff and Coulter Land Group recently, and they really did bring up some good points on how we figure out the tree counts for these larger parcels. There seemed to be a desire by staff to kind of clean this up, and it really made sense to them to look at a sampling. I think with technology today and GIS, and if it was left up to staff, and my understanding is staff would be the ones to pick the sampling. So, maybe they go heavy, medium, light, there's some type of methodology that you, you get an average of the tree, wouldn't impact the fees that they pay, they'd still pay the fees, it's just how do we determine the tree count? And it made sense to me to, to, you know, instruct staff to move forward with, with that new methodology, that language that would need to be changed. I agree, I think staff threw out ten acres would probably be a good threshold point, anything over three acres, maybe this methodology would apply. Anything under, they'd have to do the normal courses, the way the language is written. So, yeah, I don't have a problem with exploring that methodology and sampling and bringing it back to the board. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and I think the GIS thing, you know, is really coming of age, and you know, you're looking at satellite imagery, and there's, there's also ability to probably, you know, fly a drone or two around and kind of do some videography of sample sites, so you know, employing technology, employing technology is probably not a bad idea. Commissioner Deutsch.
Yeah, we had the one-on-one, and Coulter came in, and it made sense to me. He said, in his case, because I said, I could live with that, but I want staff to pick the area. He said, in our case, the growth is consistent all over, they can pick whatever they want, so it makes sense to me, and it's easy, it'll save money, it'll be more efficient, and we get this thing done quicker, and it'll satisfy what we want done. So, I think it's a great idea.
All set?
We're all set. Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Commissioner.
Ms. Bolton.
I don't have anything today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Deutsch.
You're starting with me, too. I got a couple real quicky things I want to share. One of them is, and Richard, nod your head, is it, I think it's been over a year now that the sidewalk's been blocked on the Harborview by construction, and there's a little glitch in the code, and I know we've had difficult construction times, but one of the more heavier traveled sidewalks in the county is on Harbor Boulevard, and it's the area that goes down to the beach complex. And I'll travel that many times a week, and it's rare that I don't see people walking on that sidewalk, or bicycling, or taking their dogs out. I don't do it, I'll admit it, but the neighbor on one side of me has two dogs, she walks down to the, she walks that walk at least once a day with the two dogs, all the way down to the, you know, the beach complex, the pool, and back again. And the other gal on the other side of me, I don't dare say how old she is, or how old I think she is, I wish I was in the shape she is, but she, twice a day, she walks down to that beach complex on the sidewalk. And there's, you know, and there's some question about, can they do it? Can't they do it? Is it implicit in the fact when they get a permit, they can, but they've had, they've had their dumpster, they've had materials, they've had vehicles, and they put the sidewalk block sign up as they should, but the people don't have any choice but then to walk in the road. And they've extended the permit, I don't recall, at least two or three times, they've extended their permit. This has been going on forever, and it's on a curve, and people are forced to have to walk in the sidewalk. I think it's something we have to take a look at. You know, Richard Russell and Scott Proffitt, such, and half a dozen or more neighbors have been complaining about this for probably over a year now. I think it's something we may want to take a look at, because it's gone to the point that it's, I think it's becoming a public safety issue, and maybe we can sneak that into our next workshop. Also, we have another ongoing issue that's going to be a growing issue in the future. And this involves the fact that, and I'll cite a specific case, because it's come, it's come before a code enforcement. We had someone who went ahead and they built a beautiful shed in their backyard. They forgot to get a permit, but they built a beautiful shed, and in that shed, they put in a shower, they put in a kitchen sink, and a portage on. And then, they proceeded to advertise it on, what's that, EBM, or, for two hundred bucks a night, and they've been renting it out. Now, they have a hose that brings water to the facility, but people do shower, and they do, if they're in there, they use the sink, and I don't want to talk about what they do with the shower when they're in there, but most people have done it at one time or another, and that water goes right out into the yard. And I have no clue what they do with the portage on. Do they take it back to where they came from when they leave? Do they take the portage on and dump it in the canal, because they're only fifty feet from the canal, or they put it in the guy's pool that they're renting from? I've been told, and by the way, I, we finally stopped it, because I called the Department of Health, and they shut them down because of the waste issue. And the water, you know, and the, and the water, because it's not clean water what comes out of a sink or a shower. And I mean, he's a lovely, lovely, nice person, nice guy, but they tell me we can do that. Now, I, we have an issue, and it's not going to lessen, but we have people living in backyards, in tents, in mobile homes, in sheds. And I think it's something that we've got to address, and this has to be workshop, because we're going to have to make a decision what to do. Now, there's some people, when we talk about this, that believe and think, well, maybe we should allow that, because we've got such a housing crunch. I wouldn't have a problem having somebody in the shed, you know, on the property next door, and having two or three people live in it, if they could work it out, not to pollute anything, or deal with their hygiene, or whatever they're going to do. But this is, you know, it's considered, is it an accessory building? There's a lot of little points on this, and I've been dealing with this thing for months. They finally had a hearing, they finally came before, they finally had a presentation a week or ten days ago, before code enforcement, and the defendant didn't show up, and he was given a small fine, and anyway, I think it's an issue, and we're going to have to make a decision, because probably there's no one in this room that doesn't know of someone in their neighborhood where somebody's living in a mobile home, a trailer, a tent, or a shed, and if we want to allow it, well, that would be a decision we should make and a policy we should set. And maybe it is an answer to part of the housing crisis we're undergoing. I'm not sure it is the right answer, but I think it's something we're going to have to deal about it. it, bring that into the workshop. So, those, the two issues I wanted to bring up. And last but not least, it looks like, particularly if I stop talking, that we will get out and make it to the Flag Day program. And I'll mention it one more time. It's going to be at the American Legion Post 110. It's going to be at noon time today. It's not going to be real long, and, because they can feed us, we can get back for the commission meeting at Land Use at 2:00. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Seau.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In response to the accessory dwelling units, we have that coming up on a workshop. I don't think it includes--
Next week?
Yeah. I don't think it includes a shed. You know, there's life, safety issues, you know. You certainly don't want to put somebody in the shed without ventilation or smoke detectors.
Oh, but they have a sliding door on one side.
That may work. I don't know if everybody received a call from Environmental Utilities, Mr. Jack Boyer. The Public Service Commission had denied his application to sewer the Barrier Islands. I had an opportunity to go back and listen to the video of the Public Service Commission debate on the issue, and they denied it for a host of reasons that I informed staff last night. I wanted them to kind of look into it. One, that it was cited by professional staff in their denial of, you know, the Public Service Commission professional staff, that there was a conflict with our comp plan, and that the Barrier Islands has a rural designation, and they're kind of exempted from sewer, in a way. I think was part of the argument I see Sean making his way. And I know he hasn't had much time to look into this. But that was just one of the issues that was cited.
Sean Cullen, playing zoning official, I was going to say "have been sworn," but that's too early. I have not had a chance to review that. I did receive that from Ms. Nolton late yesterday evening. If you recall about, and don't quote me on the date, but probably about five or six years ago now, we did make an amendment to the comprehensive plan whereby you could extend utility services through the rural, into the rural service area, if it was for a public health, welfare, and safety issue. In order to do that, that's why, that's how Mr. Boyer's utility was able to run the water lines out there. Staff actually, back when that was being crafted, took a, took a trip out to the islands, and, yes, some of those mountains and some of those drain fields are above ground, literally, drain fields above ground. And so, I will take a look and see what their references are, and we will report back.
Yeah, they cited a specific section by number of our comp plan and code that essentially said what the request for was in conflict with our code. So, and I found that interesting because we wrote a letter of support, I have it here, dated September 27, 2021. I'll just read the first sentence. "Charlotte County Utilities and Administrative Departments submit this letter of support in the expansion of sewer services tonight, Don Pedro and Little Gaspertle Islands." And it goes on, and it's a very nice, well-written, thought-out letter, signed by Mr. Rudy and Brandon Moody, who reviewed the letter to make sure that its content was accurate. Although it doesn't call out Environmental Utilities directly, it is a letter of support to sewer the islands, because in our expansion program. That was another thing. So, it's in our expansion program, there's a letter of support. Yet the Public Service Commission went on to say they didn't have, or felt they didn't have enough county support. So, I don't know what else they want, other than we had this letter, maybe to resubmit the letter. They also cited that because septic permits are still being issued out there, that that's another reason to deny it, because they're issuing septic permits. I didn't get that one. But typically, you continue to issue septic permits if there's no sewer available. We do that here, we do that here in unincorporated Charlotte County.
That's ridiculous, yeah.
Yeah, so, and also, they cited there was no need. And there was no environmental need, and no need from the public or from a developer to put sewer out there on the island. Now, I know some of the residents don't want it. And I don't know if it's a conflict with the utility out there. Mr. Boyer himself, I've heard different stories, I don't know. But I've got to tell you, you know, searing out on those Barrier Islands is very consistent with our blue water policy. You know, we say we're going to sewer everything, we work closest to the water and out. Well, these people are on an island surrounded by water. And, you know, we all, you know, know, based on our adoption of our sewer expansion program, that, you know, septics only treat to a certain extent, and they don't treat nitrogen. But I don't want to go into that debate again. It's that whole septic to sewer thing. We've done that, we've adopted it, we've moved on with its expansion program. So, I'm hesitant to do anything at this point from Mr. Boyer until staff, our professional staff, has had an opportunity to look at the Public Service Commission and what they said, and report back to me to its accuracy, so I can get a better understanding if there's a disconnect somewhere. So, that's kind of my position on it. I didn't know if others looked into the matter, or were contacted. I think Commissioner, I don't know who's in the queue first, but--
Commissioner Deutsch in the queue.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on that, Joe. I had it in my notes, and I was going to bring it up. Based on the information I had, and based on the fact I thought that that wasn't included in our plan, I was going to recommend, as a follow-up to that letter, that this board send a letter and encourage their approval, for environmental reasons, for part of our blue water policy, and for that, you know, water is our greatest natural resource, and we've got to do everything we can to protect it. And it's no skin off their back, so I can't see why they wouldn't approve it, when the local community is in favor of it. That's, I'd send a letter from the board.
Commissioner Deutsch, I mean, Commissioner Doherty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had my conversation yesterday with Mr. Boyer. I recommended to him that he get his attorney to craft a letter specifically stating what types of action he wants us to take, so that our staff can do what you're talking about. Staff can review it, attorney's office can review it, and tell us, give us their recommendation.
It's a time crunch, though, I think.
Yeah, it has to be, it has to be very quickly, by the end of this month. So, it's a challenge. But I think, that's what I suggested to him. He indicated to me he was out of state, indicated to me he was going to get right on it. So, we'll see. I haven't seen anything yet.
Yeah, I mean, in addition to our letter that I just cited, Charlotte County entered into a bulk sewer treatment agreement with the utility as well. So, that's another document of support. You know, the fact that we entered into a treatment agreement, bulk treatment agreement, and then this letter. So, I just don't know what the Public Service Commission was looking for when we have written documentation. And, so, I just want to throw that out there. I'm not sure. I guess I'll wait to hear back from staff, and if there's a letter forthcoming from his attorney. I just don't know what else we can do.
Yes, so, Mr. Flores, I think, you know, there's only four of us here, but I think you're hearing clear, clear direction that we need some action expedited. I like what I'm hearing on either side of me, from both Commissioner Seau, Commissioner Doherty, because I think it's important to get the attorney from Mr. Boyer to give us what they need, but also have staff review the PSC and see what they, what was, where was the gap, do a gap analysis, and then do something that makes sense, and maybe try to get it back on the agenda if we need to, on the 28th. Because I think that still would be within the timeframe if we needed to do something official. Because otherwise, I, you know, we can just all, one-on-one, say something. But I don't know what that letter looks like unless it comes from administration. That could happen as well.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, if the professional staff from the PSC is telling their commission that this request to sewer the Barrier Islands is not consistent with our comp plan, I have a problem with that.
Right.
We need to know for sure.
And I will say, I, we have not been contacted.
No, I know.
So, maybe there's an opportunity for our staff to reach out to the PSC staff, make a phone call, and say, "We're not understanding. Help us understand, because the report, you know, the findings of the judgment are such, but we're, there's a disconnect, because it's saying what we believe to be untrue."
Right. Because the importance of it is, is that I'm the guy voting on it, and professional staff is telling me something. And when I hear them say, "It's not consistent with the comp plan," I'm thinking, "Okay, it's not consistent. It's professional staff. They've, you know, run through it."
You're going to believe your staff.
Yeah, on that one, yeah. Because it's a technical aspect of it. You know, it's not opinion-based. They cited the section of our comp plan. So, then I thought, "Well, maybe we do have a gap in our own comp plan that allowed them to make that statement."
I'm sorry, I had--
Yeah, it's good.
Ms. Nolton--
I've got the floor.
Well, I think we might get a legal opinion here.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
I'm breaking up.
Just to add to Commissioner Teseo's comments, I think the PSC found that it may be inconsistent, his request may be inconsistent with the comp plan. They're not required to follow what's in our comp plan. They take it under consideration. But in any event, we will address that. We'll get with Mr. Cullen and find out.
Yeah. Yeah, they don't have to follow, but they shouldn't tell somebody--
Yes.
--it's not consistent, because you're making a judgment on that.
Yeah. I think their real concern, though, was not so much consistency or inconsistency with the comp plan, but a lack of demonstrated need, and that there wasn't any individual or business coming forward asking for the service. And they said that there's no immediate health concern.
Yeah.
And I think that's their interpretation of our master sewer plan. I think there's enough information in that plan that you could pull out that says there is a health concern. But for whatever reason, they didn't follow that.
Commissioner Seau, you're recognized. You have the floor again, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, and I, when they talked about that, you know, maybe they were looking for some health crisis where they found septics directly leeching into the ocean. You know, and that may not be the case, but septic systems, you know, goes back to the treatment. And, you know, it's a compilation of all the flushing, and the drain fields, and hydrology, and how that, the waste and the nitrogens get back into the water.
Exactly. I mean, it could be bacterial, you know, coliform-type stuff, but it could also be just the nitrogen and phosphorus going out into the water and creating food for algae.
Yeah.
We don't want that.
No. Okay. And also, I looked at an ordinance in another Florida county regarding rental increases in excess of 5%. And this goes to our rental, residential rental community. And it's very specific as to when this can be used. But it's essentially an ordinance that for long-term tenants would be given 60 days' written notice for a rental increase in excess of 5%. And, you know, there's not much we can do as a board in terms of, you know, I don't want to get into a landlord-tenant writing leases. But this, this type of 60-day notice is throughout many, many states in the country, and I believe in different counties in Florida. But what it does is it gives tenants a time to plan. So, here's what happens. If you're given a rental increase, and, you know, you can do 5%, but if it's 10, 15, 20% like we've seen, and even more in some instances, the tenant has no time to go out and find another place, because we look at our housing stock. So, what this do, does is, if you're given a minimum of 30 days, this gives you 60 days, which is a reasonable amount of time to at least financially plan. So, if your landlord says, "Hey, your rent's going up," you've got 60 days to figure out what next. And what happens is, if you don't do that, it creates more stress on government resources, and all the other type of assistance programs that we have, and potentially homelessness. Because if you have 30 days' notice, and you can't find a place or put together first, last, and security in time, you're going to be on the street, or you're going to be in the home, the housing, homeless shelter. So, I believe it's very specific to just a 60-day notice of rent increases over 5%. I think it's worth looking at. It's kind of a low-hanging fruit, for residential only. So, I didn't know if my board members, you know, had any comments on that, maybe to talk about it a little bit. But it is out there, it's in many states, and I think it's a little something we can do to help the tenants who can't find another place to live if their rent goes up. At least it gives them 60 days. It's not saying they get to stay, they just get extra notice that the rent's going up.
Mr. Billy?
Yeah, thank you, sir. I'm willing to look at it. I want to tread very, very carefully in that area. Obviously, you're not recommending that we get involved with the percent increase, just if it's over 5%. Give some kind of notice. But I'm willing to look at it. I mean, I'd be interested in knowing what other jurisdictions in the state of Florida have adopted something like that. But I'm willing to look at it, but I want to be very, very careful.
Commissioner, you know, it's honest, honestly, it's interesting, because for me, it sounds like it's a landlord best practice. Because if you think about it, why would you want to, you know, tell somebody at the last minute it's going up, because they may say, "Well, I wasn't ready, so I'm out"? Now, they may have an empty unit for a month or two while they get the next person. So, for them, you know, I would think most landlords want to have a renegotiation of at least, you know, at least 60 or 90 days, or, you know, way in advance. "Hey, are we going to, are we re-upping again?" Or, "Hey, for your next renewal, it's going to go up, and I want to give you plenty of time to plan for that. And if you can't, great, because, you know, I know I can get more, but I'm giving you enough time to find another place." I mean, it just makes a lot of sense. Yeah.
I mean, there's enough ordinances out there that we can look at some of the templates. I have, I have one right here. It's a pretty easy read. It just made sense to me, and I thought I would just bring it forward to see if there was an appetite to ask staff to look in it, maybe on one-on-ones, talk about it some more, and then, you know, have a discussion, maybe at another meeting. I know Carrie's back there. I don't know if she has any input on it. But, yeah, I don't know. Maybe not. We can wait. I know, it was unprepared, yeah. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Doherty.
Thank you. Had the opportunity to participate at the Water Authority meeting on June 1st. I would encourage, especially the workshop, and encourage everybody to look at that. There's some really good information that took place. I just would, like, one point that came up that I didn't catch way back, and I've been working with Mr. Flores on this. We're showing in our 20-year projections, water supply projections, ultimately, 20, in 2042, needing 20, from 16.1 MGD going to 27.
Seven, I thought 24.
11 MGD increase. The plant's only being expanded 18 MGD. So, we're gobbling 11 of that 18. So, I've asked that he get with staff and scrub those numbers that we projected to make sure we're in line. It's, from the piece of a facility, Sarasota's not taking that much more, as we are. But they have the Carlton Plant. We have, we have that one supply source. So, the numbers might be correct, but I, it changes our allocation to a point that the arithmetic gets very interesting with capital projects down the road. The other thing I wanted to share with you, tomorrow, I've been invited by the South Florida Water Management District, Phil Flood, to tour the C-43 reservoir for the Kalusahatchee. It's a monster facility being used to accept some of the high flows off the, off the river, and store that, from not only the basin, but also from Lake O, and store that so that it can discharge during the dry season to the estuary and keep the salinities in balance. So, it's, I'm looking forward to seeing the facility. My last stop with it will be the actual pump station there, too. So, I'll be there tomorrow morning, looking at a big reservoir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And, you know, I appreciate the public coming up, and we'll try to get information about the ATUs. I don't think we have a, I don't think we have a lot of purview over that, and it may be that it's a state-determined situation where they just do every two years. But we'll get some staff to get with you on that after the meeting. And I appreciate Mr. Ely coming in and talking about the longshoreman's insurance. And, you know, it sounds logical, what you're requesting. I don't know if we can, if we can work on that, but we'll ask staff to explore that as well. And Mr. Russell, thank you again for coming in. The only thing I wanted to talk about real briefly was, you know, we had our tourism meeting on Friday. So, our tourism revenue for, let me pull this up again, for the month of March was $1.3 million, just for one month, for tourist tax. That is up almost 40% from the year before, which was 950, which was up from 700 the year before that. So, we're above, the 2018, 19 was $1 million in March, 1.3, 700,000, and that was a record, by the way, 700,000 in April. On the current track right now, we did a little over 6 million last year. We might hit 7.5 million in tourist tax. So, I want to make sure, I asked Mr. Flores, I know we all head-nodded about, you know, we did the three-year lease for tourism where they are now. We need to start planning for where they're going to land, because we're going to have so much money left in these coffers in tourism. I know the state's going to sweep it. And, you know, we, they're working hard, they got a good staff, you know, we need, we need a plan. We need to, you know, and I've asked Sean to give me not only the budgets of our sister counties in Sarasota and Lee and Collier, but also, you know, their facilities and what they have and where they are, so that we, because we're really coming into our own. So, Mr. Flores, is that going to come back to us in July? Is that on the July workshop?
We did not have that on the July workshop. I mean, we're mindful of, you know, just like the Sadowski funds, or what possibly could happen to when these funding buckets get healthy, and the state or legislature might start to look at it. But, you know, we'll, we'll start to put it through its paces and bring it back to the board once we've got some data to bring back to you.
we've got some data to bring back to you.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, if, if we don't have it by July, I'd like it on the workshop for September. So if we could do that, I'm giving you a heads up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to be careful with, you know, when we do have a revenue stream like that coming in, that we don't do what the federal government does. Get the fire hose out and just start spraying it everywhere just to spray it. We, it needs to be a targeted approach, a needs approach. Look at where the dollars are, what it's appropriate for, and then look at our capital needs and then have that discussion.
That, that's the whole point of putting it on, but, you know, they're, they're basically working out of a, you know, someplace.
Oh, yeah, I don't have a problem as long as it's a targeted.
Right, and, and, right.
I never liked the rental thing.
Yeah, well, and, and here's the thing, you know, they're looking at their budget and, and they're building their reserves for when times are bad and they have to do what they did during the pandemic, which was outstanding with their marketing plan to be able to get people to come here where other places were suffering. So, you know, I just, I, I know that they won't be inefficient and so I'm glad we're going to do that. If there's nothing else, we are in recess until 2:00. We'll have land use. And I guess I'm supposed to slam this thing here. Good afternoon and welcome. It's 2:00. We're resuming the regular land use meeting for the Charlotte County Board of County Commissioners for June 14, 2022. We are now on land use and so, Mr. Flores, if you don't have anything, I guess we're going to move directly to Mr. Cullen. We have our consent agenda. Anyone wishing to address the board during this portion of the meeting must fill out a card, state their name for the record and state which agenda items will be addressed. Remarks will be limited to three minutes maximum and shall be addressed to the commission as a body and not the individual members with regard to these subjects. We're going to allow for public comment on the consent agenda first. If anybody has any comments, then we would presumably pull some items for discussion and if they're quasi-judicial at that point, we'll ask for ex parte. So does anybody from the public wish to speak on UA 1 through UA 4? Okay, Mr. Cullen.
Thank you. I believe if you'd like, you can move the consent agenda or poll anyone.
I didn't know if you had any comments.
Item number UB3 in the public hearing. I could either mention that now or not. That has been withdrawn. We just received an email about a half an hour ago from the applicant requesting withdrawal. Should they reapply, we will bring them back through the proper processes and channels.
Okay. So we'll start with Commissioner Doherty. Any item in the consent? Commissioner Teseo.
UA 4.
UA 4 will be polled. Commissioner Doherty.
Nothing to poll. I'll move the balance of the consent, sir.
Second. Move motion second, the balance of the consent. I just want to make note of the fact that UA 3 is the final site plan for the new emergency room that's going to be next to the Kia dealership. So I'm personally excited about the fact that, you know, we have more healthcare options and, you know, for citizens. They don't have to go as far. So I think this is a wonderful thing. Any other comments? Hearing none. Is there any opposition to the motion to approve UA 1, UA 2, and UA 3? Hearing none, those passed unanimously. We'll now move to UA 4 and we'll start with ex parte. Commissioner Doherty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had my monthly staff briefing with Community Development and Attorney's Office and filed my paperwork this morning.
Commissioner Teseo.
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Doherty.
My staff meeting filled out the paperwork last week.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, the, the motion to approve included UA 3, which was polled.
UB3, wasn't it?
Correct, UB3. UB3, the.
Sorry, I thought it was UA 3.
I apologize if I may have misspoken.
You kind of tripped me up, Commissioner.
Yeah, that's not part of the consent.
No, it's not.
Point of order.
He just, he thought he heard UA 3.
Oh, okay.
UA 3 is in fact the emergency room.
Correct, and I just said.
Okay, that's, that's why you're happy.
For, right, under comments, just saying, I'm really happy that that's coming forward.
Very good. Thank you.
And as far as ex parte, you know, again, I don't, I don't take meetings with the applicants or with staff. I think it's more important for me to get all of the information as the public gets it so that I can hear it for the first time and ask appropriate questions and get information as the public would be getting it because we're actually ruling on these things, you know, as, as more of a judicial group. So, Mr. Cullen, UA 4.
Thank you. We need to be sworn in. This is a quasi-judicial item.
Yes, sir. All, all those that would be giving testimony, please stand and the clerk will swear you in.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please say I do.
Very good. Mr. Cullen, if you'd like to present, please.
Thank you. Sean Cullen, Planning and Zoning Official. I have been sworn. At this time, I would like to offer myself into evidence as an expert in planning and zoning matters. I have over 15 years of experience with the last 10-plus here with Charlotte County as the Planning and Zoning Official and would respectfully request to be deemed an expert for the quasi-judicial items.
No objection. I believe the board does not object to your qualifications, sir.
The first item that was pulled, this is item UA 4. This is DRC 2100189. This is a final detailed site plan for Baraccon Associates and Tucker's Point Limited Partnership. This is Tucker's Point Phase 1, consisting of 354 single-family lots and associated infrastructure. The project site is approximately 148 acres of a 578, or 507.08 acre parcel located at 28450 Tucker's Grade. Here is the high aerial. As you can see, it's bounded by Tucker's Grade 41 and I-75. Here is the aerial image. The zoning designation is Plan Development and the future land use map designation is a combination for the entirety of the project of commercial, preservation, and low-density residential. The subject today is just in that area designated as low-density residential and preservation. Here is the site plan, closer in, master utility plan, and the landscape plan. Staff finds that this meets all the standards and conditions of the Land Development Regulations, PD conditions, and comprehensive plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Very good. Commissioner Seo.
Thank you, sir. There was an updated presentation on here and I couldn't see if there, that there was a red line. What specifically got updated?
The, the, we were, okay, sorry. We were made aware that they had received their swift mud permit, so that was added into the staff memo as the Exhibit 6, I believe it was. That was the approval letter that got signed, I believe it was last Thursday or Friday, and uploaded onto here.
Okay, just, I just want to refresh my memory on this. So in terms of impact fees and developer agreements or proportionate share agreements, I believe they have a developer agreement to bring utilities to the site.
That is correct.
Waste water and water.
That is currently under construction now.
And I think that included reuse as well.
That, I'm not a party to that or wasn't aware of it. I will have to defer to the applicant on that. They are available. I believe there is also reuse, but I don't want to put that as a fact.
Okay. In terms of the impact fees, was this a proportionate share agreement? Are they paying the current impact fee rate that we have now that's in place?
They will pay whatever impact fees at the time of building permit submittal. It is assessed at time of building vertical construction houses permit, is, yes, application, and then they will have to pay that prior to the final inspection. So whatever impact fees are in place at the time that they go vertical with homes, they will, those will be the impact fees that they.
So this isn't one of those developments where the developer came in and asked for proportionate share agreement or impact fee credits or anything like that? It's just to straight up our impact fee schedule?
That is correct. To the best of my knowledge, there is no oversizing except with utility lines, I believe. I believe they are getting some utility credits. There are no other development agreements. There were no, this isn't like Burn Store where road capacities were being tripped or anything.
Yeah, I mean, another reason I wanted to pull this is because, for transparency. I mean, this was in the consent agenda. I, I get that. But I wanted to pull it so the public can see what's coming. This area that's being developed currently is not that developed.
Correct.
So this will really be the first big footprint in that area and all the impacts that it'll bring to the area.
Yes, sir.
And, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty large project. I know this has come before the board before to get to this point, but I think it's important that the public understand growth and what's happening in Charlotte County. So I just wanted to pull that just so we can have that discussion.
Sure.
And again, clarify the, the impact fees because I couldn't quite remember if this was one of the proportionate share. I know we had that conversation for Burn Store Road, I think, on a project for proportionate share agreement.
Correct. There are no, to my knowledge, are no capacity issues. I believe even in this area, Tucker's Grade, is it, can't remember if it's for land in that section or not. But this is, this has come before you for the plan development. This is one of those projects that, and some of the land use attorneys have said is one of their projects that they've worked on cradle to grave from when they first started doing land use to when they retire. So this is one that's had a lot of, lot of history over the times.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Do we want to hear from the applicant?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. For the record, Carl Baraco Jr. with the Baraccon Associates. We do represent the applicant. We do agree with staff's recommendation of approval and I'm here to answer any questions that y'all might have.
Okay. Yeah, can you answer the reuse question? Is that being provided for this site?
So with regards to reuse in this site, the reuse main is being brought up Burn Store Road and construction of the reuse main will terminate at Notre Dame. So it is not being brought all the way into Tucker's Point, but it will stop at Notre Dame.
Okay, because, you know, obviously with a project this big, you're going to have a lot of internal landscaping, I would assume.
Yes, sir.
Right. So how do you intend on irrigation for all those common elements?
So the project has a consumptive water use permit from the Southwest Florida Water Management District and they will pump from the onsite lakes for an irrigation source.
Okay, so they'll be using onsite lake.
Yeah.
I know, you know, it's part of a utility discussion we always have, you know, because we have wastewater. We want to distribute reused water, not wastewater, but it's reused to the point where you can use it for irrigation. And, you know, we're a provider of that. So whenever we have big projects like this, I just, you know, question why we can't, because these are the kind of customers I believe we want, like large end users for that wastewater, you know, to move it out. So, you know, but I guess if swift mud gives you the permits, you can irrigate onsite or it was cost prohibitive to bring in the line. I just assume since you're bringing in sewer and water, you can bring the reuse in the same, in the same ditch.
Yes, sir. The, the offsite utility was designed and permitted prior to our firm being involved in the project.
Yeah, I just look at these, you know, as a missed opportunity, you know, how could we have worked to get the reuse out there? And this may just be one of those missed opportunities. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I totally agree. And I think that if you're going to move down that road of just using, pumping from ponds, that everybody needs to be told, just don't fertilize. Because what happens is those, those ponds turn into green soup. We've had lots of issues around the county with folks doing that. They, they'll pull, put irrigators in and pump it up and spray their lawn and then they're still fertilizing and it just, it becomes a big mess. I'll go to Commissioner Doherty, then I have another question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going by memory now, but I'm, I think when we had a utility meeting and a presentation on the expansion down there at the Burn Store plant, the comment was made by the utility that they had, even with that expansion, they had the customer, Burn Store Marina, I think, would gobble up all the available reuse. So that's probably why it stops at Notre Dame. It, it, there just won't be any affluent, any treated affluent to go down, to head east at this point. I, I'm, but I think that needs to be checked, Mr. Flores, with, with utilities. But I'm going by memory now. I think that's what they said.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and that may have been at the time. I think we talk all the time about Burn Store and the growth. We've approved thousands of units that are coming online. I can imagine that's going to be millions and more gallons of potential reuse water, you know, for the future. I just didn't know if, you know, when we approve these projects and we put in the, the water and sewer, does it make sense to do the extension of the reuse or even if it's on the utilities dime? Because we want to get it out to those areas, do we just put the pipe in the ground and leave it for future hookups? You know, does that all make sense? And it sounds like nothing happened on this one. We just terminated at a certain point and that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If you'd like us to start pushing reuse, we'd be more than happy. Currently, we don't have any specific requirement. We don't even have requirements for irrigation. We just require that the landscaping be kept alive in perpetuity. However they, they want to go hand-water each one, that's up to them.
And maybe another discussion for when we have our utility meeting.
Well, yeah, and I, I think, you know, you're right. The trench is open, so you'd think common sense, it's probably less expensive to put the third pipe in now, but at least we're not redoing the road yet. So if there comes a time when we decide whether it's going to be Notre Dame or Semel or whatever combination to get an east-west corridor, then we really need to kind of say, you know, what are, what are the chances this is going to become important sooner and maybe we need to, to do that at the time.
Because a project like this will draw more out that way. It's, it's a matter of time.
No doubt. Ms. Nolton, I'm sorry, you're in the queue.
Just procedurally, if you can get the applicant to state on the record that they accept Mr. Cullen as an expert.
Thank you. Do you accept Mr. Cullen as an expert?
Yes, we accept Mr. Cullen as an expert.
Very good. Now, one other thing is, you know, we're, we would be approving the first phase today and there's obviously two large swaths, maybe two and a half, of additional areas where you're going to be putting residential and then the commercial to the south. At what point, and I don't know if it's Mr. Cullen or you, but at what point does it trip the possibilities of needing a traffic signal? And how is that brought into this whole PD work, workup? And then, I can't recall if it's four lane. I think, I think it is two lanes for sure going toward the highway. I just can't remember if it's, I should pull up a satellite, but I, I just can't.
I think it's four lane to, from 41 to the interstate.
I believe it is.
Is it? Okay.
Yes, four, yeah.
So is it, it is in both directions?
I believe it is.
It is? Okay, good. All right. So that would be our question. It's good. The road's four lanes were there, but, good for you. And so the question is, when do we, when would the traffic, are there monies being held back through, I guess, the permitting process or whatever it is, impact fees, but set aside in some way, whether it's through this process or another, that when that traffic trips it, that the, the signal would go in?
So when each phase comes in, we're reviewing the traffic impacts. That's a requirement of the final detailed site plan and once those warrants are met, then that will go in. And, environmental. Public Works Engineering, they are keenly aware of this and they are working with the applicant on that and we will continue to work with them on that. But yes, they are keeping track of that and when it hits its warrants, then it will be required.
And from a, I guess from a spacing standpoint, it's good that it's in the midpoint between 41 and 75. You know, now I'm starting to put the NPO hat on and decide, and, and thinking in consideration of would that actually look like a roundabout at that time? So, you know, we don't, we don't, or are you even thinking about those types of things?
I, I would have to defer to our engineering staff. I apologize. That's, that's way beyond my area of expertise on, on roadway design.
Well, if you've driven up to Sarasota lately, they're everywhere.
Yes, they are.
On the county roads, on the county road system. They're putting them everywhere. So I think this might be one of those places where we should be considering it and I guess I'd need more, maybe Mr. Factry and, you know, that, that group within Community Development needs to kind of start making some, giving us options about when that makes sense, especially in these newer areas that are pristine and it would make sense to do it. I don't know, but cost-wise, it's probably the same, but maintenance-wise is probably better and traffic's going to move and flow and it's safer. So just throwing that out there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, move UA 4.
Public hearing first.
Oh, sorry.
Because we pulled it. All right. So if there's no, no further questions or discussion, we'll open up the public hearing, public input portion of this item. Anybody wishing to speak, you'll have five minutes. Anybody wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward, state your name. You'll have five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, move to close the public input portion of the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close. Any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
Move UA 4.
Second.
The motion second to move UA 4. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, that moves 4-0. All right, we'll move on to our regular agenda. Let me just pop back. And that is UB1. It is quasi-judicial. Commissioner Doherty.
Mr. Chairman, I had my monthly staff briefing with Community Development and Attorney's Office and filed my paperwork this morning.
Thank you. Commissioner Seo.
Nothing to disclose, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Deutsch. And I have nothing to disclose. Mr. Cullen.
Thank you. Good afternoon again. Sean Cullen, planning zoning official. This is a preliminary plat request for Lennar Homes LLC. This is for Babcock National Phase 6. This is proposed for 54 single-family lots on approximately 18 and 1/2 acres. This is just the next roadway out in the Babcock National subdivision within Babcock Ranch. Here's the High High Aerial mid-range. So you can see, these other roadways have been platted, single-family and multifamily. Again, the location map, the zoning designation is Babcock Overlay Zoning District, and the future land use map designation is Babcock Mixed Use. This is the 1,000-foot adjacent property owner buffer notification map, and the proposed changes, those changes overlaid onto the aerial. With that, staff would be happy to answer any questions, and this meets all the standards and requirements of the Comp Plan Code and the DRI Development Order.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Any questions for Mr. Cullen? All right. We'll hear from the applicant.
Good afternoon. For the record, Todd Rebel with Banks Engineering here on behalf of the applicant, Lennar Homes LLC. We accept Sean as an expert witness. I have been sworn in, and we have read the conditions and accept all conditions. So if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? All right. Hearing none. We will open up the public hearing. Anybody interested in speaking on UB1, you'll have five minutes. This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak, please step forward, sign in, state your name, and you will have five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, move to close the public input portion of the public hearing.
Motion and second to close the public input portion. Any discussion? Hearing none. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, that passes unanimously 4-0.
Mr. Chairman, move UB1.
Second.
Motion second to move UB1. Any discussion? Hearing none. Is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously 4 to 0. Mr. Cullen, we will move on to our second regular public hearing and last item, UB2.
Thank you. Sean Cullen, planning zoning official. I have been sworn, but this is a legislative item. This is a street name change. This is Charlotte County Community Development on behalf of KL Westport LLC. This is to rename a portion that was in, excuse me, errantly named West Palms Drive. That's a duplicate. Renaming that to West, excuse me, from Westport Drive to West Palms Drive. There was a section that accidentally made it through the preliminary plat and final plating process where it is the same name. So this is the High Aerial, again, within the Westport Development midrange, and this is a section. Westport Drive is the main roadway or one of the main roadways. This is West Palm. One of the conditions had been to rename this section on the plat to West Palms. That, again, inadvertently got missed, and so we are running this street name change. So this segment from here to here will become known as West Palms Drive, similar to the remainder of the street. The future land use map designation is Murdock Village Mixed Use, and the zoning designation is PD Plan Development. Again, the proposed change, and staff is happy to answer any questions. This meets all the standards and requirements for proper street name changes.
Very good. Any questions for staff? Yes.
Yeah. Wouldn't that just be a Scrivener's error? Was it mislabeled or just left out?
It was mislabeled on the preliminary plat. It should have been changed on the final. It got missed, and it was final-platted as such. So because it was formally final-platted on the Mylar, we have to go through this process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Apologize.
Any other questions? All right. Well, we are the, are we the applicant? No.
We are the applicant on behalf of the property owner because this is a joint application.
Got you. Okay. So that's all the testimony we're going to hear. I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, UB2, please step forward, sign in, state your name. You'll have five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, move to close the public input portion of the public hearing.
Motion second to close the public input portion of the public hearing. Any discussion? Is there any opposition? That passes 4-0.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
Move UB2.
Second.
Motion second to move UB2. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing none, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And that concludes our business. So thank you, everybody, for being here, and our next meeting will be June 21. We have a public workshop at 9:00 AM. So thank you all, and